Good evening. Welcome to the June 30 Glendale City Council Meeting. As you can see, we are back in the original City Council chamber for the last several months. Starting from December, we held our City Council meetings in the Municipal Services Building as the council chamber underwent renovations to address accessibility, upgrade technology, and provide system upgrades. In addition, we have rearranged our seats to ensure appropriate physical distancing requirements. And now, due to the evolving situation with COVID-19 and health recommendations from Ale County Health Department, the Glendale City Council meeting will be available to the public electronically. Due to social distancing requirements, the public will not be able to attend the meeting. This meeting can be viewed on local cable channel Charter and Spectrum Channel 6 and AT&amp;T U-verse Channel 99. You may also stream online through our website, www.glandalcca.gov, by scrolling all the way to the bottom of the webpage and selecting "Live Streaming," which is the third icon from the left. For public comments and questions during the meeting, call 818-937-8100. Do we have the number on the screen? On the bottom of the screen. Please do not call in advance of the agenda item. With this being said, may I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Brotman.
Here.
Devine.
Here.
Kasakian.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Mayor Agajanian.
Present. Now, thank you, Mr. Agajanian, and I will lead the flag salute.
Please join me for the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under a individual. Thank you.
Please remain standing for tonight's invocation. We pray and give thanks for the many blessings bestowed upon us and ask for continued guidance in all aspects of our lives, especially the leadership of our city during the most difficult times. We pray for safe neighborhoods and prosperity and ask that we work together to make Glendale a wonderful place for everyone who lives and works here. We pray for all of this and for peace tonight and always. Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Agajanian. Next item, please.
The agenda for the June 30 regular meeting of the Glendale City Council was posted on Wednesday, June 24, 2020, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Next item, please.
Three would be presentation and appointments. Three A agenda preview for the meeting of Tuesday, July 7, 2020.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, we'll go directly to Rubik Galanian.
Mr. Galanian, please.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of City Council. For July 7, 2020, the Glendale Housing Authority, we do not have any business agenda items. However, we do have a special meeting of the City Council in that afternoon commencing at 3:00 p.m. with two items, both from community development. First one being update of downtown specific plan standards a year following adoption and miscellaneous proposed code cleanups, followed by proposed local urgency ordinance to extend planning entitlements in response to impacts due to COVID-19 emergency orders. For the, excuse me, regular City Council meeting in the evening commencing at 6:00 p.m. under consent items, City Clerk regarding legal advertising contract for the city of Glendale, followed by Public Works regarding award of contract for North Verdugo traffic signal improvements and dilemma zone detection project and rectangular rapid flashing beacons at various locations project, followed by community service and parks regarding acceptance of COVID-19 employment recovery national dislocated worker grant funds to provide employment recovery assistance to workers affected by COVID-19. Under action items, we only have one item from Public Works regarding standards for landscaping and parkways. Finally, under hearings, Public Works regarding approval of the final engineer's report and ordering the levy and collection of annual assessments for the North San Fernando Road Corridor Landscape Maintenance District for fiscal year 2020-21. That concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Galanian. Mr. Agajanian, what's next?
Presentation by Charter Communications regarding the increased demand on the broadband and addressing impacts to service.
Thank you. Who will present?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we have Steve Sawyer on WebEx with us, who will provide that update. Mr. Sawyer.
Hi, can you hear me here okay?
We can hear you.
Can you hear me? Oh, great. Well, thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor Agajanian and Councilmember City Manager Beers and Ms. Papazian for giving Charter, also known as Spectrum, the opportunity to provide a brief update of our network services and the steps we have taken to help support our customers, our employees, and the communities we serve during this public pandemic. I've had the pleasure of personally meeting several of you over the years, and I look forward to connecting directly with others in the not-too-distant future. As you may know, in 2016, Charter acquired Time Warner Cable and Bryant House Networks to become a leading cable TV and telecommunications provider throughout Los Angeles County. In 2018, Charter made good on its pledge to upgrade its network and provide a 1-gig internet connection to the vast majority of its customers across California. We often hear about 1-gig levels of service and making cities gig cities, and Charter is proud that we did that here in Glendale two years ago. Charter provides vital internet voice and TV news access to more than 4.7 million families in small and medium-sized businesses across 242 California communities. Enhancement and scalability of our network has prepared us to manage the increased usage during this unprecedented time and allowed us to respond to the increased needs of customers resulting from state and local stay-at-home orders. Our products and services have proven critical to the state and the city's continued operation, ensuring our customers can do their jobs, learn remotely, connect with medical professionals, access vital information, and keep in touch with family and friends. We have attempted to make signing up for internet service simple and affordable. Before the current crisis, Charter provided a high-speed, low-cost broadband service known as Spectrum Internet Assist, which allows families who have students that participate in the National School Lunch Program and seniors 65 years or older and on SSI to gain access to the internet for $17.99 a month. That program remains in place, and we are actively enrolling new households each day during the pandemic. We have sent out millions of pieces of mail to households across the state with pre-qualified offers, which allows prospective customers to sign up quickly and easily without the added step of needing to provide eligibility. We have more than a million customers receiving our low-cost Spectrum Internet Assist product, and California leads the country in terms of the number of homes we have signed up for it. Now that we are faced with this new crisis and to meet the new demands for internet access during the COVID-19 crisis, Charter committed to host of measures supporting K through 12 and our college/university students and teachers, our customers and our employees, including the following. We offered free internet for 60 days for new student/educator households. Beginning March 16, we committed to offer Spectrum internet up to 100 megabits, 200 megabits in some areas, for free, including in-home Wi-Fi and self-installation kits for 60 days to households with students or educators who did not already have Spectrum internet subscription, and recently announced the extension of that offer through June 30 today. By the end of the school year, we expect that nationwide, that nationwide this offer will have helped approximately 400,000 students and teachers and their families continuing schooling through remote learning. We've offered free Wi-Fi access. Charter opened its thousands of Wi-Fi hotspots for public use through June 30. Hotspot locations can be found by going to the spectrum.com/WiFi-Hotspots. We waived late fees and disconnects. Beginning March 16, we committed to not charge late fees or terminate service for residential or small business customers who let us know they are experiencing COVID-19-related economic challenges, and we have extended this commitment through to today, June 30. There have been no data caps and no hidden fees. As before the current crisis, Charter imposes no data caps or hidden fees. The Spectrum News, our award-winning local news service, has opened its website to ensure people have access to important news and information, including updates about the COVID-19 pandemic, and I know that we've had several of the council members and mayors from Glendale appear on our program, and we thank you very much for your participation. Charter has offered extended premium programming promotions to its Spectrum TV customers at no additional charge.
Now, due to the evolving situation with COVID-19 and health recommendations from Ale County Health Department, the Glendale City Council meeting will be available to the public electronically. Due to social distancing requirements, the public will not be able to attend the meeting. This meeting can be viewed on local cable channel charter and Spectrum Channel 6 and AT&amp;T U-verse Channel 99. You may also stream online through our websites, website, www.glandelca.gov by scrolling all the way to the bottom of the webpage and selecting live streaming, which is the third icon from the left. For public comments and questions during the meeting, call 818-937-8100. And do we have the number on the screen, on the bottom of, okay, on the bottom of the screen? Please do not call in advance of the agenda item. With this being said, may I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Brotman?
Here.
Devine?
Here.
Kasakia?
Here.
Najarian?
Here.
Mayor Agajianian?
Present. Now, thank you, Mr. Agajianian, and I will lead the flag salute. Please join me for the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under a individual, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Please remain standing for tonight's invocation. We pray and give thanks for the many blessings bestowed upon us and ask for continued guidance in all aspects of our lives, especially the leadership of our city during the most difficult times. We pray for safe neighborhoods and prosperity and ask that we work together to make Glendale a wonderful place for everyone who lives and works here. We pray for all of this and for peace tonight and always. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Mr. Agajianian. Next item, please.
The agenda for the June 30th, 2020 regular meeting of the Glendale City Council was posted on Wednesday, June 24th, 2020, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Next item, please.
Three would be presentation and appointments. Three A, agenda preview for the meeting of Tuesday, July 7th, 2020.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, we'll go directly to Rubik Galanian.
Mr. Galanian, please.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of City Council. For July 7th, 2020, the Glendale Housing Authority, we do not have any business agenda items. However, we do have a special meeting of the City Council in that afternoon commencing at 3:00 PM with two items from, both from community development. First one being update of downtown specific plan standards a year following adoption and miscellaneous proposed code cleanups, followed by proposed local urgency ordinance to extend planning entitlements in response to impacts due to COVID-19 emergency orders. For the, excuse me, regular City Council meeting in the evening commencing at 6:00 PM under consent items, our city clerk regarding legal advertising contract for the city of Glendale, followed by Public Works regarding award of, excuse me, award of contract for North Verdugo traffic signal improvements and dilemma zone detection project and rectangular rapid flashing beacons at various locations project, followed by community service on parks regarding the acceptance of COVID-19 employment recovery national dislocated worker grant funds to provide employment recovery assistance to workers affected by COVID-19. Under action items, we only have one item from Public Works regarding standards for landscaping and parkways. Finally, under hearings, Public Works regarding approval of the final engineers report and ordering the levy and collection of annual assessments for the North San Fernando Road Corridor Landscape Maintenance District for fiscal year 2020-21. That concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Galanian. Mr. Agajianian, what's next?
Presentation by Charter Communications regarding the increased demand on the broadband and addressing impacts to service.
Thank you. Who will present?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we have Steve Sawyer on WebEx with us, who will provide that update. Mr. Sawyer?
Hi, can you hear me here okay?
We can hear you.
Can you hear me? Oh, great. Well, thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Agajianian and Councilmember City Manager Beers and Ms. Papazian for giving Charter, also known as Spectrum, the opportunity to provide a brief update of our network services and the steps we have taken to help support our customers, our employees and the communities we serve during this public pandemic. I've had the pleasure of personally meeting several of you over the years and I look forward to connecting directly with others in the not-too-distant future. As you may know, in 2016, Charter acquired Time Warner Cable and Bryant House Networks to become a leading cable TV and telecommunications provider throughout Los Angeles County. In 2018, Charter made good on its pledge to upgrade its network and provide a 1-gig internet connection to the vast majority of its customers across California. We often hear about 1-gig levels of service and making cities gig cities, and Charter is proud that we did that here in Glendale two years ago. Charter provides vital internet voice and TV news access to more than 4.7 million families and small and medium-sized businesses across 242 California communities. Enhancement and scalability of our network has prepared us to manage the increased usage during this unprecedented time and allowed us to respond to the increased needs of customers, resulting from state and local stay-at-home orders. Our products and services have proven critical to the state and the city's continued operation, ensuring our customers can do their jobs, learn remotely, connect with medical professionals, access vital information and keep in touch with family and friends. We have attempted to make signing up for internet service simple and affordable. Before the current crisis, Charter provided a high-speed, low-cost broadband service known as Spectrum Internet Assist, which allows families who have students that participate in the National School Lunch Program and seniors 65 years or older and on SSI to gain access to the internet for $17.99 a month. That program remains in place and we are actively enrolling new households each day during the pandemic. We have sent out millions of pieces of mail to households across the state with pre-qualified offers, which allows prospective customers to sign up quickly and easily without the added step of needing to provide eligibility. We have more than a million customers receiving our low-cost Spectrum Internet Assist product and California leads the country in terms of the number of homes we have signed up for it. Now that we are faced with this new crisis and to meet the new demands for internet access during the COVID-19 crisis, Charter committed to a host of measures supporting K through 12 and/or college/university students and teachers, our customers and our employees, including the following. We offered free internet for 60 days for new student educator households. Beginning March 16th, we committed to offer Spectrum internet up to 100 megabits, 200 megabits in some areas, for free, including in-home Wi-Fi and self-installation kits for 60 days to households with students or educators who did not already have Spectrum internet subscription, and recently announced the extension of that offer through June 30th today. By the end of the school year, we expect that nationwide, that nationwide this offer will have helped approximately 400,000 students and teachers and their families continuing schooling through remote learning. We've offered free Wi-Fi access. Charter opened its thousands of Wi-Fi hotspots for public use through June 30th. Hotspot locations can be found by going to the spectrum.com/wifi-hotspots. We've waived late fees and disconnects. Beginning March 16th, we committed to not charge late fees or terminate service for residential or small business customers who let us know they are experiencing COVID-19-related economic challenges, and we have extended this commitment through today, June 30th. There have been no data caps and no hidden fees. As before the current crisis, Charter imposes no data caps or hidden fees. The Spectrum News, our award-winning local news service, has opened its website to ensure people have access to important news and information, including updates from about the COVID-19 pandemic, and I know that we've had several of the council members and mayors from Glendale appear on our program and we thank you very much for your participation. Charter has offered extended premium programming promotions to its Spectrum TV customers at no additional charge, including Showtime, Epix, Disney Junior, Disney XD, Game Show Networks and UP TV to provide more entertainment options for families staying at home. Our employees have stepped in and stepped up, ensuring our customers stay connected when it matters most, easing the strain for millions of families and businesses. As Charter's chairman and CEO, Tom Ledge, recently said, "Hard work and dedication of Charter's 95,000 employees has been remarkable." While our employees are doing all they can to maintain our operations, we are taking the necessary precautions to protect them. We've offered additional paid time off. All of our 95,000 employees, including hourly workers, receive paid time off, including sick time. Additionally, we've implemented an additional two weeks of paid sick time for COVID-19-related illnesses when we ask an employee to self-quarantine. Every employee was given an additional 15 days of COVID-19 flex time to address related issues, including caring for children and dependents. And hourly employees will be paid out for any unused portion of their COVID-19 flex time after the end of the calendar year. There's been no layoffs for at least 60 days. Our employees are our greatest resource, and to reinforce our commitment to them in this uncertain time, on April 19th, we announced that for at least the next 60 days, no employee will be laid off or furloughed. Charter is a company where people don't just do their jobs, they build careers. This long-term commitment to our employees is why we recently announced that we will permanently increase our minimum wage to $20 per hour, which will be implemented over the next two years. In the meantime, frontline field technicians and customer call center agents received a retroactive $1.50 per hour increase dating back to the start of the COVID-19 crisis. We know our workforce is key to our long-term success and ability to deliver exactly what our customers depend on, great service and reliable connectivity. We are proud to invest in them. Additionally, to support and assist America's small businesses as they restart the economy, on May 18th, Charter announced it will provide one month of free voice video and/or internet services to any new customer that signs up for Spectrum business as their connectivity provider. Charter continues to work closely with federal, state and local government officials, community leaders and others in the industry to ensure we are meeting needs, sharing appropriate information and staying abreast of developments to provide the level of service that our customers expect and deserve. Our current offerings ensure that students and teachers have the connectivity to finish our current school year, our employees remain safe and communities can begin to stabilize. We continue to monitor and reassess the current pandemic and the impact on our customers and employees and are confident that our actions thus far demonstrate a willingness to do our part during this public health crisis to serve their needs. We are proud to be a company that values our customers, our employees and the communities we serve. Thank you again for the opportunity to speak with you tonight, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have for me.
Thank you. Is there any question?
Mayor, I'd like to ask Mr. Sawyer.
I'm sorry. Any question from Sawyer?
Mayor?
Does Councilwoman?
Yes.
Yes.
Let me ask, first of all, thank you for all the support that you're giving your employees during this crisis. It's very commendable. My question concerns Wi-Fi in playgrounds, and do you have experience in doing, what would that entail and is that part of some of your service?
We do provide Wi-Fi in parks and we work with individual cities to address those needs, and we actually have a department set up to actually look at that and work with cities to provide internet service and Wi-Fi service at different municipal locations.
Oh, okay, and well, that's good because I think I may be asking our staff to look into that, so maybe they'll give you a call.
We welcome the opportunity.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Devine. What's next, please? Oh, you have a question? I'm sorry, there are questions. I'm very sorry. Councilmember Kasakia.
Thank you for coming before us to tell us about what Charter is doing, and again, I echo Councilmember Devine's comments about how you're handling your situation given COVID-19 with your staff and employees. I'm specifically, Mr. Sawyer, concerned about the status of your network in terms of congestion, specifically in Glendale. How are you addressing that? What is Charter doing about it in terms of relieving congestion in nodes where you're seeing that you're unable to deliver on the promised speeds?
Well, we have a team of engineers that are working around the clock to monitor our network, and our network is held up through the added usage of the internet. And when we do hear of issues from individual customers or city staff or council members, you know, we look to address that immediately. There could be a myriad of reasons for congestion that's causing it in an individual's home, or it might be something out on the network within the neighborhood in the node, like you said. And what I would ask is to coordinate with city staff. They've been very good in the past in providing me any information specific to customer complaints or issues they're hearing out in the community, and then I can immediately follow up with the right personnel to look into the cause of that and how we can resolve it.
Well, let me just say that I have specific concerns about, I've received comments and concerns from residents in the Rossmoyn neighborhood northwest, Royal Canyon. I'm not sure if Councilmember Najarian has any speed issues, but I know at the last discussion we had, there were some comments that he made, so if you want to jump in, now's your opportunity, Councilmember. So, specifically, those are areas that I've heard from. You know, I will also say in full disclosure, we are a Charter, we use Charter in my house and it seems to work fine, but in other areas I have heard of these concerns. So, I would recommend that you look into them. So, what is the timing on the work delivery as far as, I'm sure with the increased usage and traffic, there is a lot more issues. What is your turnaround time of delivery of services and answering these calls from customers?
Well, I think it depends on the specific cause of the problem and how we go about addressing the resolution. I don't think there's a patented, you know, turnaround time of resolving the issue depending on how complex it is, but if we, if I could ask of staff if they could forward me the specific addresses and information, like I said, then I can forward that on to a myriad of engineers and technicians and field ops folks so they can immediately look at it and take whatever measures are necessary to resolve the problem.
Is there any more questions?
No, I'm fine right now, but I don't know, I just received someone saying that there may be someone on the call waiting to comment on this item. Are you guys aware of this? Staff?
Yes, as a presentation, we don't normally take calls, but we can take a call.
I mean, I'll be up to the mayor, but mayor, there's comments. Would you like us to take?
I just want to make sure that Mr. Kasakia and I are done.
I'm done for now, but I would like to, if it's a matter of getting together with our staff, I would like to know the range of times. I understand that it varies depending on the issue, but much like our services that we provide and whether it's police or fire response time, I would like to know the range of the average response time to customers' concerns, and I'm aware that each issue is different.
Okay, thank you. Now, there is a question from Mr. Sawyer, Mr. City Attorney, Mr. City Clerk. Is there a question from Mr. Sawyer?
Mr. Mayor, there's somebody who's calling in and wants to speak on this item. Normally, we have speakers calling when the council is going to take action on an item, not on any particular, you know, on items that are not matters that require some action, but it's certainly within your purview to allow the speaker to speak or address the speaker.
I would like to see if they have a question from Mr. Sawyer because Charter, you know, I have the Charter on TV and there's phones and people that are experiencing lots of difficulties recently, so if we can connect the caller, if they have specific question from Mr. Sawyer, please, you may do it at this time. Mr. Agajianian?
At this point, I don't see there's any calls.
Okay. All right, so we go, thank you, Mr. Sawyer. We don't have any questions.
Absolutely, thank you very much for giving us the opportunity, and like I said, there could be a whole range of what's causing a particular problem at a customer's home, whether it's the equipment in their house, if it's older, it needs to be swapped out, or if it's an issue out in the neighborhood in the specific node or something farther back in the network. But again, until we know the specifics and the location, there's not much we can do to address it other than continuing to monitor the network and alleviate the congestion when we can.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mayor, I do believe there is a call. I'm trying to get through to find out if, the person hung up and I think he's trying to call back right now.
Okay, can you connect? Mr. Sawyer, probably there's, this is a question for you, probably.
Sure.
Okay. Please go ahead. The caller. We are listening. The caller can speak now at this time.
Caller?
Yes.
Is this?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, thank you.
I can hear you.
Are you calling about Charter Communications?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you very much. My name is Zanku Armenian. I'm a resident of the Rossmoyn neighborhood. I had not actually hung up, I was hung up on, but nonetheless, when I heard you reference the caller, Mr. Garcia, that's when I called back in. My comment has to do with my experience that I wanted to share with the City Council and with Spectrum. So, first of all, I want to agree with Mr. Sawyer's comments that his frontline personnel are in fact spectacular and have provided wonderful customer service. The problem is not with the personnel, the problem is with the management who's handling the Glendale franchise having to do with Spectrum. I had about 45 days worth of time where Spectrum was unable to respond to the issues that we were having in Rossmoyn, and I'm not alone, there are many other residents where there was congestion on the network. I had escalated my issue all the way to their customer to supervisor level in terms of the issue, and even the supervisors could not get proper answers from the management who's handling the Glendale franchise in terms of what was going on on the network. I had multiple field personnel come visit my property in terms of why I was not, I was barely getting any internet service. I was getting either slow, intermittent or none. And when this was raised to that level of supervisor, one of the issues that the personnel that kept coming out said that there was congestion on the network in the Rossmoyn neighborhood area. When the supervisor tried to pursue this with the management that was handling the network, he could, he himself could not get the answers. I was on the phone with Spectrum daily for 45 days before the issue would be resolved finally because of my tenacity and my persistence with this issue. So, while I really appreciate all the frontline personnel that have done a spectacular job at Spectrum, I'm mortified by the management's lack of response to customer needs at a time when their internet service is perhaps equally as important as the power that Glendale Water and Power provides in this sort of situation where everyone has to work from home. So, I would appreciate greater supervision and accountability on the part of the management that is managing the network and Spectrum service in Glendale. I find it unacceptable from a customer service perspective that they would be so unresponsive. I can be completely understanding as a customer that they are experiencing an anomaly in terms of the amount of load on their network. What I cannot accept is the poor response by the management who are managing the Glendale franchise for Spectrum. That to me, in terms of providing information back to customers, is unacceptable. I appreciate this opportunity to reflect my views and my experience with the City Council, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Armenian. Mr. Sawyer, you want to answer or?
I just want to apologize for the experience that you described and the difficulty you had in getting the issue resolved, and I would request that you, through the city staff, provide me with information about your address, the specifics of the issue, and I assure you I will follow up and find out, you know, where there are gaps in communication internally to get these issues addressed and resolved. Again, I do apologize, and you should not have had to go through 45 days of, you know, mixed messages and delays in response, and if you could provide that information to staff, I will follow up and see, you know, what the issues were internally within the communications and the management, and I do apologize.
Thank you. Mr. Agajianian, what's next?
Next would be appointment of board and commission members.
Thank you very much, Mr. Sawyer.
Next would be appointment of board and commission members. C1 would be Sue Ball Yang, Arts and Culture Commission.
Ms. Devine, you want to say a few words? Ms. Devine? Ms. Devine, you want to say a few words about your appointment of a commissioner? Oh, I can't hear Ms. Devine. Is there a problem?
Paula, can you hear us?
I can. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, all right. First of all, this is an appointment to the Arts and Culture Commission, and I first of all want to thank Ara Oshigan, who was my former appointee for his service. He was a wonderful contributor to the Arts and Culture Commission, and I was very proud to have him represent me on that board. But we have to move on, so I'm going to ask council to approve my nominee to this Arts and Culture Commission. Her name is Sue Bell Yang. She is a graduate, she has a bachelor's from Harvard University where she attended the Rossky School of Fine Arts in, I'm sorry, where she received her bachelor's in visual and environmental studies. She graduated summa cum laude from Harvard. She then came out here and went to USC and received her master's in public arts studies at the Rossky School of Fine Arts. She has dedicated her life and her career to the arts. She is currently the deputy director of the 18th Street Arts Center in Santa Monica, and she has worked with the city of Santa Monica and their civic partners on arts and culture plans for the city, and she has been a lecturer at UCLA and a specialist in arts education, communication and strategic partnerships in the art field. I think if you read her resume, you can see that she is a stellar candidate. She has worked as an online producer on the Oprah Winfrey Network. She was involved, a co-founder and associate director of Watts House Project in LA. She is an adjunct faculty member at the University of California, LA. The courses that she teaches is designed to enhance civic engagement and community organizing through socially engaged art and art in public places. I think she is perfect for this position. I am proud to nominate her and I would hope that my colleagues will approve my nomination. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sue Bell Yang.
Thank you very much. May I have a motion for?
No motion, that's necessary, Mr. Mayor.
I'm sorry.
I think you let Councilwoman Brotman make the motion, and then you can go to a vote.
I'm sorry, can't hear you.
I apologize. If you want to go ahead and make the motion.
Yes, okay. So, I nominate Sue Ball Yang for the Glendale Arts and Culture Commission.
Do I have a second?
You don't need a second, but you can.
Roll call, please, then.
Councilmember Brotman?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Kasakia?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Agajianian?
Yes. What's next, Mr. Agajianian?
Four would be consent items, including minutes following our routine and may be acted upon. By one motion, any member of the council or audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such requests. may do so by making such requests before motion is proposed.
Do I have any motion? Is there a second? Second? Okay. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Brodmann?
Yes.
Devine? Devine?
Ms. Devine?
I can't, I'm sorry, I can't hear you at all, any of you.
Councilmember Devine?
Yes. That's the consent calendar, right?
Correct, correct, Councilwoman.
Yes.
Kasakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
And Mayor Agajanian?
Yes. What's next, Mr. Ajumian?
Next would be City Council and staff comments.
Is there any comment?
I do, Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Devine?
Yes. Thank you, thank you. First of all, I want to take this opportunity to congratulate Steve Pierce, Mr. Montrose. Mr. Kasakian and I were up at the marketplace yesterday, where they celebrated his retirement from volunteerism, more or less. He was a fabulous volunteer, great guy to work with, just a kind soul, and I just want to wish him good luck and good health in this next chapter of his life. Second, I would, I don't know, is Onik Bolikian here tonight, or not?
No, I don't see him here tonight. Oh, he's here?
He is here.
Okay, he will be back in a few seconds. Is he here?
No, he's not here.
No? He's not here?
He's not here, okay, well, maybe City Manager Beers. I had a, an email from a gentleman who is eighty-four years old, and he wants the soccer, the senior soccer program reinstated at the Pacific Community Center. And they want to do, they want to play walking soccer, and they have it all worked out, so there's social distancing and no contact. And I just want to know what the cities stand on opening Pacific Community Center or the park for, to allow senior soccer, where we are with that.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council... Councilmember Devine, as it relates to opening of fields, at this time, our fields are not open for play, as it relates to any types of leagues, whether it's Little League, AYSO, or any groups that have teams together for any scrimmages or playing time. However, the County of Los Angeles has allowed cities to open their fields to leagues who may have clinics, only clinics, by way of camps, for any of the leagues that are within their jurisdiction or want to utilize their fields. If the senior group wanted to utilize the field as a clinic, we would have to have that conversation with them, related to a camp setting, where it would be a clinic and it would not be a game and/or a scrimmage. There are very strict guidelines associated with these clinics. As we opened it up over a week ago, at the end of last week, we had to send a letter to all of the participants of the leagues, to re-remind them of the guidelines set forth by the County of Los Angeles, related to each of these clinics being able to operate on the fields, based on social distancing, parents, spectators not being able to stay at the fields, et cetera. Our staff, our park staff, had an extremely difficult time with some of the coaches and the players and the parents last week, so we had to send a letter to the leagues, basically informing them that if they weren't able to control their coaches and the parents associated with some of these leagues, we would have to cease allowing the clinics to occur. And I just put that out there, just, you know, by way of you opening it up, Councilmember Devine, just as education for individuals who may be listening. And so if the senior program can utilize it by way of a clinic, we would be more than happy to accommodate and possibly figure that out with them.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Beers. But imagine eighty-four years old and wanting to play soccer. I just think that's fantastic. My second item is concerning the Wi-Fi in parks that I just discussed with Mr. Sawyer. And I'm wondering if any of my colleagues would like to second a motion to maybe put this on the agenda, to, at least to get a staff report on the possibility of providing Wi-Fi in our parks?
Sure.
Okay. Is there a second?
So you have the second?
I can't, again, I can't hear anything.
You have the second, Mr. Kasakian, seconded your request.
Thank you, thank you. And third, my third is concerning the mask distribution. You know, I was very impressed that the Japanese government, the Consul General, was here donating, what, ten thousand masks to our city? And I'd like to know how we're distributing those, because when I was at the market, there were a lot of, not a lot, there were some people walking around with no masks, and I've seen them on the streets. And I'm wondering if there is some way that we can distribute those masks on our streets, in our downtown business area, maybe the ambassadors, and maybe we're already doing this, and I don't know it, but the ambassador, we could initiate something like a Glendale Cares Volunteer Corps, that just walks around, and if people are not wearing a mask, they have them and they can give them out. Is this a possibility, or have we already distributed those ten thousand masks?
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, to answer Ms. Devine's question, half of those masks are to be distributed to the skilled nursing facilities, because, some of them, because they are in absolute need of PPE, and we are going to provide half of the masks to them. The other half, we intended to utilize internally for our ambulance operators, who also can utilize them themselves, as well as provide them to those who are in need when they are in contact with them. We do have a number of masks available to us, by way of the purchases we've made, donations that have occurred, police department, the fire department, our internal offices, the accessibility to masks for us to be able to hand them out to individuals in the community. Officers have done that quite a bit in the last three-plus months, and so has the fire department. If we don't need the full five thousand, we would anticipate we would transition to providing those masks to the community, definitely.
Thank you.
Okay, that would be great, because I think right now, we're in a very serious condition, situation, I guess, all over the United States, but, you know, we have this mandate, and it would certainly be good if we had people out there on the street that were volunteers, that were actually handing them out and making sure that people are wearing them and have them accessible. And finally, and, Mr. Mayor, this is my final comment tonight, and I would request that we adjourn, and this is my third week in a row doing this, and it breaks my heart, that we close tonight's session, adjourn tonight's meeting in memory of Mary Margaret Smith. Mary Margaret Smith died peacefully in her sleep on January 11. She was ninety-six years young. She was born in Vanita, Oklahoma, in nineteen twenty-four, and moved to Glendale in nineteen thirty-one. She attended, believe it or not, Horace Mann Elementary, Toll Junior High, and Hoover High School, graduating in nineteen forty-one as a class valedictorian. Ara Najarian, you will find this interesting. She attended Occidental College briefly, but after World War II, she began, she moved to Cal-Tac, where she studied aeronautical engineering and mechanical drafting, and later worked at Lockheed in airplane design. But after the war, and I'm hot, it's hard for me to understand this nexus, she entered UCLA, where she graduated in forty-eight, and began a thirty-seven-year career as an elementary school teacher in Los Angeles County Schools. She and her husband Fred loved to travel and to camp. During her career and throughout her life, Mary Margaret was active in the Glendale community, including serving in the Women's Committee of the Glendale Symphony Orchestra, the AAUW, the American Association of University Women, the PEO, the Women's Civic League, and as president of the Glendale Assistance League. She often said that in a volunteer organization, the only really good job to have was president, because it's the most fun. She especially enjoyed chairing the Assistant League's Annual Festival of Trees, which she did multiple times. And in 2013, she was recognized for her tireless philanthropic efforts by the Glendale YWCA with their Heart in Excellence Award. Mary Margaret is survived by her son Edson of Los Angeles, and her daughter Roxanna Smith-Roscoe of Fort Myers, Florida, and four grandchildren. She was preceded in death by her husband Fred and her two brothers. She was smart, she was funny, she was a good friend to many, and she was always a free spirit. She will be missed. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. We will close tonight's meeting in her memory.
Thank you.
God bless her soul. Okay, Mr. Najarian?
I have a few comments, Mr. Mayor, thank you. I'd like to announce to the community that last Thursday, Los Angeles Metro had its monthly board meeting, where I was elected/selected second vice chair. So I will be in rotation to be chairman. Obviously, it's a great position to have, and they do great work in reducing vehicle miles traveled, increasing transit use. And we've got a couple transit projects that we're looking at right now in Glendale, some in the near term, some a little further out. Secondly, it's too bad Onik Bolikian has left, but his staff at the Pacific Pool, including Courtney Maglio, and Rennie, and the other supervisors there, are doing a great job in keeping that pool open. Most of the pools in Southern California are closed, because they can't handle the intense protocols required to keep the deck and the ladders and the changing areas sanitized. But Pacific Pool and the City of Glendale has done a great job in keeping that up there. I have had the opportunity to swim there in the mornings, it's very well organized, and provides a great outlet. It's getting a name throughout the Southern California swimming community. There's a bunch of masters teams in the area whose pools have closed, and as they scramble to find a place to practice, everyone is happy to hear that Glendale's pool is open. So thank you to Onik and Courtney, and all the staff, all the lifeguards and maintenance staff for making that a safe place to swim and get a workout in. My next question is perhaps, I don't need a report right now, I don't even, I'm not even asking for a second for it to come before council, but I'd like to get some information on what's going on at Victory and Winchester in the Rancho area. There was a gas station there, it has completely gone to pot, there's a terrible chain-link fence, dilapidated weeds, the building is falling down, it really makes the neighborhood look bad. So Phil, if you can just, you know, CC council, I'm not sure the public in general is interested, but we could, I mean, do what you would like to do to get that information out. I know there was some development proposed there, but it hasn't happened, and it's a mess. It's really quite a, quite an eyesore for that block of Victory and Winchester.
Send enforcement after.
Thank you.
They should make a decision.
Thank you, Phil. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Any other comments? I think...
Yeah, I'd like to, first of all, congratulate staff on getting us back into chambers, having the elevator fixed, and hopefully, that's in lockstep with opening up City Hall back to the public. I know that, for those of you who can't see and are viewing from home, we have a number of city staff here, who are here to present on various reports. If we can figure out a way to ideally allow members of the public in as well, following safe guidelines and social distancing, I think that's a benefit to all, because as great as it is to watch these meetings from home, for many people, I think it's very different to see your government deliberate in person. In reading a few of the reports, and especially came to mind when I was looking at some of the consent items, and it's been percolating in my head, and I'd like to ask staff to look into this, if it is possible, given our charter, and see if I can get a second from a colleague, to have a local purchase preference for city programs and contracts. You know, it comes to mind when we're looking at these meal delivery services. We have a lot of restaurants right now that in the city could probably benefit, and I know that we went through this whole discussion about the county's program and administration, but now, in looking at us allocating our programs, whether it's restaurants or whatever it may be, our priority should be to help our local economy first, try to keep our dollars as much as we can locally. So a report on local purchase preference, or a local business preference program, when we're looking at contracts. Is there a second?
Thank you. Oh, second?
Is there anyone from the council that would second that?
You second? All right, so we have a second.
That's all, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Najarian?
I was talking about swimming, and I got too excited, but I do want to remind everyone, and it goes on, dovetails into what Ms. Devine was talking about, those masks. Don't forget that the Greater Downtown Glendale Association does have masks that they presented to us, and I think they're handing them out throughout the downtown area.
Absolutely.
So there's no reason why anyone should be going without a mask, especially since we have these opportunities and generous donations from countries and organizations and all the likes. Thank you very much.
And also, you know, when I mentioned local purchase program, just in general, how our criteria, I'd like a report, or perhaps it can be done in memo format, because in addition to that, there's things that we could do to give, you know, preference to minority-owned businesses, or we can give preference to women-owned businesses, like the state does oftentimes for contracts. I'd like to see what our city policies are in regards to that.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, we do have a quick update from Mr. Lansafame regarding one of the grants that will be, the lottery, not the lottery, the application process will be commencing tomorrow, so I will ask Mr. Lansafame to give you a...
Mr. Lansafame?
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, earlier today, I spoke about the residential grant program opening tomorrow. We have two business grant programs also opening at twelve o'clock tomorrow. The first will be low-income, sponsored by Community Development and Community Services in Parks. We're using CDBG funds. Those do require businesses with a majority low-income employees. They're eligible for a $5,000 grant. There will be about a hundred and fourteen of those that we can distribute. In addition, you had made funding available, and so we'll have a second program that will be open to a wider range of business. That too will be a $5,000 grant. Both programs, you can only apply for one, both programs will open applications tomorrow. We'll have about a two-week period through the fifteenth, and then they'll be set up for a lottery. So information on those two programs can be found on our website, glendalca.gov, and if you just scroll down, you'll see a big button and information on grant programs. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
A quick question.
Yes, Mr.?
So the total number of businesses, again, that would be able to support for the second program?
Three hundred and twenty.
So the first one is a hundred and, what did you say?
Fourteen.
It's a hundred and fourteen, five hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars of CDBG money. The second is 1.6 million dollars, that the council approved, and that would fund three hundred and twenty $5,000 grants. All the information is there on our website, the eligibility qualifications and all.
Okay, thank you. Is there any more comments from council members? Okay, we don't have. I just want to, my comment would be, where is John Takhtalian, our one of managers? If he wants to come forward and introduce the gentleman in Wayback that he... If he wants to come forward and introduce the gentleman way back that he worked on this project, that as our viewers can see, we have everything new in here, basically. If you would say and mention his name, and maybe come forward, if he wishes to say a few words, we'd welcome him to the.
Absolutely, Mayor Gajanian. I believe the person you're referring to is John Brooks from BFA. He and his partner Jerry were instrumental in bringing this room back in service. It's a rather complicated project, a lot of technological upgrades. I couldn't even begin to do it justice trying to describe what they did, but they have worked tirelessly day and night over the last two weeks to bring us to where we are today. And there's still a lot more to go. And I don't know if John wants to come up. He's a very timid gentleman, very good at what he does, but we couldn't have done it without him.
I saw him past few days. He was working hard and, I mean, advising the people who were helping him to what to do. Take it that he's a very knowledgeable person, and he puts everything together in here. Thank you. Okay, now, I want to see, to take any calls from the public as it relates to community event announcement. Do we have calls?
Mayor, we do have four calls. I will start with the first one.
Okay. Please, go ahead.
Ara, you are live. Ara?
Yes, thank you so much, Mr. Mayor, city council members. I have a community announcement to make. A few months ago, Councilwoman Paula Devine had suggested that we conduct a study session for 5G, and we are going to be doing that via Zoom. So we are inviting the public and especially the city council members and staff to this session. It's going to be on July 8 at 7:00 p.m. And the public and city council members and staff can visit a website that we launched with the information, which is www.5gfreeglendale.com. That's F R E E G L E N D A L E dot com. And people can participate. It's going to be a Zoom session, so we will be having experts from around the world actually presenting. So this is actually going to be much better than if we had done a local in-person presentation. So we will have the foremost experts presenting every aspect you can imagine about 5G and how it will be affecting our future and our health and legal matters and all sorts of great stuff. So I'm looking forward to seeing each and every city council member participate. We will be sending you personally also an email as the event comes closer. So this is going to be July 8 at 7:00 p.m., and you can get your information at 5gfreeglendale.com. We look forward to seeing you there, and thank you very much. Everyone, keep safe, and we will be back next week on Tuesday to make this announcement again, and we encourage everyone to spread the word because the 5G network will have an effect on all of us, and we should all know how it works and what it's going to do for us. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Next.
DW, you're live?
Yes. Hear me?
Yes, go ahead. You're live.
Yeah, the smoking issue, I've been sending back and forth emails for about six months with Renee Suida and the city council I've been CCing around. I just talked to the general manager, the district manager at Starbucks at the location, and she's saying that they have been calling the cops out religiously, and if they do come out, the cops will only give them a warning, and they're smoking right in front, in the doorways and the entrances, as well as in the parking lot of John's Market. And I called both John's Market and Starbucks and the McDonald's across the street, and the managers, all of them, said they've never ever seen a code enforcement officer out there. They never even knew what a code enforcement officer was. And to me, when I'm bouncing back and forth with the Community Development Center down there, with Philip and Peter and John and Renee, and they're saying that they've been sending out code enforcement officers, and they've been seeing no violations, and the managers are saying they've never even heard of a code enforcement officer, they never been approached, never got a business card, never been told to call them to come out. But when they do call the police out, the police just give them warnings, and they don't, if they do give them a ticket, the people come back right the next day. And what I'm trying to question is, how many times does something need to be warned and questioned before they are banned from even smoking? Or you, that whole part, you can't be loitering and flicking your cigarettes and just, you know, drinking coffee all day and spilling it everywhere with the cups. They're littering, they're loitering, they're not doing anything besides camping out. This is like their second home all of a sudden. And it just questions me that, I go to other cities like Thousand Oaks, Agoura Hills, Abbasus, Santa Clarita, I was out in Rancho Cucamonga this weekend, never seen anybody just hanging out in parking lots camping out with multiple men, it looks like a nightclub of just men everywhere, smoking cigarettes. I don't see that in other cities. But when I come to Glendale, I'm pumping my gas up in my car, and I see two guys smoking cigarettes next to a sign that says Flammable 25 feet away. I go up to the cash register, the guy just laughs in my face because he goes, oh, I don't want to lose my customers. This is, this is a problem, that establishments are getting threatened by the smokers, they don't want to lose their customers, and the cops are just giving warnings, and if they do give a ticket, it doesn't stop them. Doesn't stop. Come back right the next day and do it all over again.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Please, next one.
Cody, you're live? Cody? Cody, can you hear me? Cody? Cody, you're live? Can you hear me? Cody, can you hear me? Mayor, I'll go to the next caller. Isabel, you're live? Isabel?
Yes, I can hear you.
Great, go ahead.
Okay. Dear Mr. Mayor and members of city council, my name is Isabel Meyer. I live at 606 Haver Camp Drive in Glen Oaks Canyon. We have lived in our home for the past 46 years, and I am committed to the well-being of our neighborhood. For the past 30 years, I have run a disaster preparedness program in our canyon. Originally, it focused on coping with the trauma of a major earthquake. During this pandemic, we have connected canyon seniors with some of our 60 volunteers for help with shopping and other necessities. I personally call 90 seniors once a month to check on their well-being and any needs they may have. The reason I approach you today is a matter of life and death for those living in Glen Oaks Canyon. We live in an environment similar to that of Paradise, California, where two years ago, 86 lives were lost in a wind-driven wildfire. Our canyon also has one way out. Glen Oaks Boulevard is a single-lane street. Imagine 750 households trying to evacuate in a brush fire surrounding our homes. Not only would immediate gridlock result if a thousand or more cars tried to leave the canyon, but the very same street would also need to serve as an entry point for firefighting equipment. Some years ago, there existed a graded dirt road leading from the locked gates behind the Shoal Canyon tennis courts to Figaroa Street in Chevy Chase Canyon. This road no longer exists due to the expansion of the landfill and resulting regrading. I plead with you to create a potentially lifesaving exit in case there is a wildfire in our canyon. Last August, an arson fire started on Broadway Boulevard in Eagle Rock quickly spread to within 50 yards of the entrance to our canyon. Had there been any wind, this fire could have easily jumped Glen Oaks Boulevard and obstructed the only way out of our canyon. We must learn from past disasters to prevent similar loss of life in our city. A graded dirt road in Chevy Chase Canyon or Eagle Rock is essential if we don't want to face the responsibility for a major disaster in the future. I propose an exit road, barred from public use but accessible by code to disaster volunteers. Our program has proven its value in the past and is recognized by local as well as state agencies as exemplary for community activism. I am speaking for the many canyon residents who depend on you for their safety. With every fire season, we face this repeated threat. Attempts to get action from the Glendale Fire Department have been unsuccessful so far, and we dare not put this urgent matter on the back burner any longer. Thank you for your kind consideration of our concern. We are doing what we can in support of our public agencies and are now depending on you to do your very best.
Thank you very much. Next caller, please.
Tony Passarella, you're live? Tony, can you hear me? Tony? Tony, can you hear me? Tony Passarella?
Hello?
Tony? Yes, can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
Go ahead. You're on the air.
Thank you. Tony Passarella, 30-something-year resident of the city in Glendale. Good evening, Mayor, council members and staff, and viewing public. In light of what's been happening, this unprecedented situation that we're all in, in regards to the COVID and all that that's brought on with the closures of just about everything for a period of time, and having to wear the masks and the social distancing, all of this stuff, and then the George Floyd incident with the protest, massive protests all over, even right here in Glendale and in the City Hall courtyard there, and the rioting in Santa Monica and the burning of much of Minneapolis, and so all of this stuff is very unsettling and quite alarming. And now lately, I would say for the past two, maybe even three weeks, I've been hearing And I'm going to relate this in a minute here. And then we have the monuments being desecrated, we're having statues being toppled, on and on and on it goes, and all of these different regulations that Newsom is putting in and different governors in Seattle and Minnesota and so forth. So the fireworks thing, three weeks, I've been hearing like around 11 o'clock, 12 o'clock. So I didn't look into it, but I thought it was a little unusual, so I bounced it off my sister and my nephew, and they also have been hearing them, and then friends in Las Vegas, and I thought, oh my gosh, I got to look further into this. So then I Googled fireworks complaint. And so I found that the complaints are coming in, hundreds of complaints are coming into the police departments all over the country, from coast to coast, east, west, north and south, south. So I called the Glendale Police Department, and with some information that I had, and that came in recently about BLM and Antifa radicals possibly using fireworks to start fires, and this being a prelude, kind of a distraction of gauging police response and, you know, getting the people prepared. So in fact, I didn't get the name, but I talked to a woman at the Glendale Police Department, and she said, in fact, yes, we've got the same information that you have. And I read her, it's very, very long detail what I have. And I read it to her, and she said, in fact, yes, we are working with the FBI on this, and we're on high alert on Saturday. So I'm just putting that out there, not fear-mongering, but to alert the citizens of Glendale. The policemen and fire should know about this. Well, police I know do because they told me they did. And just asking, you know, the residents to just be on high alert, have your head on a swivel, maybe it's best to stick around the house, just in case. In light of everything that's going on, don't be surprised.
Thank you, Mr. Passarella. I love you. This is over three minutes. Thank you very much for your information. Next, please.
Cody? Cody, you're live?
Hello, how are you guys tonight? I had a question, forgive me if you guys already went through it, but what is Glendale doing for the rent freeze that's in place that's inspired today? Are you guys planning to extend that with the surge in cases that are happening currently?
At this time, you are not answering any question. We will visit that item, I guess, a little bit later. So if you watch the proceedings, you will see what the decision is going to be.
Okay, so you already answered that question earlier, is what you're saying?
I'm sorry.
We haven't answered it yet.
You do not have it. We will review the item a little bit later.
Well, it's supposed to expire tonight at midnight, is that correct?
Yes, tonight.
So rent is supposed to be due July 1st, and how can you expect people to pay rent when the cases are surging and people are afraid to go work?
Mr. City Attorney, you want to answer?
Mr. Mayor, the item is on the agenda later tonight. Actually, it's the next agenda item, I think, so stay tuned.
Agenda item, and we will look into it, or we review it at a later time, today, tonight.
Okay. I'll look for the update then.
Thank you.
And I think Los Angeles County already extended to July 31st.
All right, thank you. Thank you for your call.
Thank you.
What's next, please?
Mayor, that is all the calls. Next item is Action Items. ADA Management Services Regarding COVID Update: Consideration of Extension or Amendment of Public Orders on Commercial and Residential Eviction, Moratorium Rent Increase Freeze and Face Coverings. ADA 1 Resolution Modifying Extending a Public Order Relating to a Moratorium on Commercial Eviction. 2 Resolution Modifying Extending a Public Order Relating to a Moratorium on Residential Evictions. 3 Resolution Modifying Extending a Public Order Relating to a Freeze on Residential Rent Increase. 4 Resolution Modifying Extended Extending a Public Order Pertaining to Face Covering. 5 Resolution Ratifying a Public Order Waiving Fees Related to Outdoor Dining Permits for the Al fresco program.
Ms. Yes, Ms. Beer?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, Chief Lanzas is here to provide you with an update on numbers related to COVID-19. After the chief has completed his presentation, City Attorney Garcia will provide you information on all the other orders, and we will await the direction from the city council in terms of each of those items. With that, Chief Lanzas.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Sylvia Lanzas, your fire chief. I'm before you this evening to speak about some of the numbers, and as all of you are well aware, the troubling numbers that have been well-publicized through the media over the last couple of weeks throughout Los Angeles County and the United States in general. If you recall, several weeks ago, when I was presenting before you, I mentioned that I was worried about a potential second wave or continued wave of the initial, and I predicted that it would be sometime around June 20th. I was a little bit off, as we've seen the greatest spike over the past seven days, where the county has averaged over 2,500 new cases in LA County each of the past seven days. So to date, as I have the last few weeks, the confirmed cases worldwide, we are over 10 million-plus cases, over 500,000 deaths across the world. Confirmed cases in the United States is 2.6 million plus with 129,000-plus deaths. Confirmed cases in California is 217,000-plus with over 5,900 deaths. And confirmed cases in Los Angeles County, we are over 100,000 with over 3,300 deaths. The numbers, as has been the case The numbers, as has been the case for several weeks, in Glendale changed since I printed this this morning. So today, our confirmed case count is one-thousand-four-hundred-and-thirty-two cases with one-hundred-and-six deaths. Today, in Los Angeles County, we had forty-five new deaths and twenty-seven-hundred-and-seventy-nine new cases. In Glendale, the bit of positive news is that we have maintained the seven-day average across the last seven days at under twenty, which has been a number that I've watched since this began. That twenty number is a number that I feel is one that would keep us on a flattening-type curve. However, the cases across the county are troubling, and therefore, the county and the state has taken action to close some of the, or reverse some of the openings that had happened previously. As you can see here in this graph, we are below twenty average over seven days since about June twentieth. Los Angeles County, not the case. As you can see here, the graph continues to rise, and the peak continues to become higher and higher with that average that I talked about in the twenty-five-hundred number range for the past seven days. This graph that I've showed in my last couple presentations is a bit of positive news for Glendale, and I don't want to paint a rosy picture because it's not. But if you recall, the first time that I presented this graph, which is the positive cases per one-hundred-thousand, we were the top line. We were the red line that was the highest. The second time I presented it, three weeks ago, we were the second to the last line, and today, we are the lowest line, with our confirmed cases per one-hundred-thousand being at about seven-hundred. The next graph that I've also shown several times is again a trend that I think is positive, and this is the age-adjusted number for our city. We originally started at about one-twenty, then we went to about one-thirty-three, and we are today number one-eighty-three out of the cities and communities in Los Angeles County. Out of about three-hundred-and-thirty, I believe, three-hundred-and-thirty-three, we are one-eighty-three. So the trend is positive for us in that area. This graph is a new one that I'm showing, and all the other ones show an increase as being the problem. This one is reversed. The decrease is the problem because this is the hospitalization across Los Angeles County and the availability of beds. So our medical, surgical, and telemetry beds are today at seven-hundred-and-four beds available and ICU beds at a hundred-and-thirty beds available. Again, in Glendale, as we've had since the start of the pandemic, we have had a weekly conference call meeting with our task force, the COVID Task Force, which includes our three hospitals, our police department, obviously, city staff, Glendale Community College, and the GUSD. And on our Monday call this week, our hospitals were in decent shape. They have seen a bit of an uptick, but are still in pretty good shape. Today, Glendale Memorial is about fifty percent capacity, both ICU and regular beds. Glendale Adventist is about sixty percent occupancy with about forty percent available with the ability to surge both of those hospitals. And then Verdugo Hills is at an ICU, they have seven of twenty-one beds occupied, and their medical, surgical beds are sixty of ninety occupied. So they're a bit higher on the occupancy rate for the hospitalizations. This shows the activity, the social distancing throughout Los Angeles, which I've shown over several weeks. Transit continues to be low. The walking and driving is at about baseline and a little bit below over the last few days. I would like to close by just asking people, as we approach the holiday weekend, as everybody heard, beaches in Los Angeles County were closed yesterday. Today, I was told that late this evening, Ventura Beaches have been closed. I urge the public and the viewing audience to heed the warnings that we have given to you. Stay home unless you must leave your home, physically distance if you do leave your home, practice good hygiene, make smart and responsible decisions so we can continue to keep our numbers here in Glendale low and manageable. And throughout the county, we need everybody's help. Wear a face covering if you leave your home, and please, please heed these warnings so we can get on the better side of this pandemic. That's the end of my report. I'm available for questions.
Thank you. Any questions? Mr. Brockman?
Yes. Thank you, Chief, and thanks for all the work you've been doing to keep us informed and safe. You mentioned the hospitals, you know, their total beds and their ICU beds, and it looks like at the moment, you know, they're okay, but we know that, you know, the deaths.
Well, hospitalizations and deaths are lagging the caseload. So what are they saying about their ability to handle, you know, increased patient load? You mentioned their ability to surge. Can you explain what that looks like when they surge and whether, you know, we should be working with them thinking about any overflow if they think that that's a potential situation?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of council, Councilmember Brockman. We have worked with the hospitals. The surge, what the surge means is their ability to react to a spike in hospitalization need, whether it be ICU need or regular bed need. Every hospital by order of California must have a plan. If we had a train accident, a plane accident, they have to have a plan to surge their capacity on any given day. All of our hospitals, the three local hospitals here in the community, have put together a COVID-specific plan that several of them implemented earlier on in this pandemic, April-ish timeline. All of the hospitals have a plan in place and feel that they've asked that we continue to spread the social distancing, the mask-wearing, the proper hygiene. One thing that's interesting that I should have shared initially is what we're seeing is the demographic, the age demographic is changing, which is no surprise. The people that are out and about, that are returning to work, that are going to the beach and going out to eat, and as many of you may have heard this weekend, they're saying that over five-hundred-thousand people visited nightlife in Los Angeles County. Those are the younger people, between eighteen and thirty-four years old is where we're seeing the most new positive cases. So what that means is the hospitals believe that the delay in those individuals becoming more sick and needing hospitalization is longer than the elder community. The elderly community is more susceptible to becoming ill quicker, and their immune system isn't as strong to fight off the disease, therefore, they show signs quicker. So we're seeing an increase in those younger people become positive, but not necessarily be hospitalized at the same rate that we were seeing the older generation.
So bottom line is, and apologies, I didn't have my microphone on before, but bottom line is, they feel that they are prepared to withstand a sharp increase in hospitalizations and ICU needs, and, or is there something additional we should be talking to them about in terms of overflow?
So, Councilmember Brockman, we do talk to them every week, and they do feel that they're in a good position right now to handle a spike in a surge, but they continue to ask us to help spread the information that I'm spreading, that I've continued to spread, and through all of the city channels, the social media, and the outreach that we've done through the city, they continue to ask for our assistance in that matter, but they do feel they're in a good position right now to handle the capacity that they anticipate. You know, their chief medical officers provide briefings to them every day on what they're seeing, both locally as well as their sister hospitals. There are some sister hospitals to ours that are not in as good shape as ours, so they're closely monitoring that. But as of Monday this week, they feel they're in a good position to handle our need.
And one more quick one, just could you talk about testing availability? I think, well, I'd imagine there's an upsurge in requests for testing. So how are we positioned there, and where can people get tests now?
That's a great question. So the three hospitals are still providing testing. However, the county-sponsored facility at the drive-through facility at Glendale Memorial was closed. It is no longer available for residents that are looking for a test through the county system. The Dodger Stadium location is our closest. There's still a location available also at the Rose Bowl. So if they go on to the Los Angeles Public Health website, they could access all of the locations throughout the county and obtain a test, as well as through their medical provider.
So, and there's adequate testing for anybody to go in and get tested, symptomatic or not at the moment?
Yes, there is at the moment, still adequate testing and encouragement for anybody who is symptomatic to be tested. Thank you. Thank you.
I have a question.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, question?
Divine. Councilmember Divine.
Thank you, thank you. Chief Lanzas, two questions. Why is Glendale Memorial closed? Lack of funding? Did the county pull that?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, yes, that is correct. The county closed the testing site at Glendale Memorial. However, I don't believe that it was only a county decision. The hospital reopening, they were using staff from Glendale Memorial Hospital because none of the other elected procedures were going on at the time. They were using that staff to staff the testing site, and that capacity has run out. So it was closed by the county, but I do believe that it was due to a staffing issue.
Are the other two hospitals?
Okay, and I'm, I'm, sorry. Sorry.
Ms. Divine.
My second question is, we've been hearing on the news about, wow, reports that firefighters are starting to have cases, multiple cases. Is our fire department okay?
Councilmember Divine, thank you for asking. Yes, as I knock on some wood, our department is okay. I will share with you that you are absolutely right. There has been a spike in positive cases throughout the fire service, the LA Fire Service. A bit of a sad note, there's been an engineer from the Torrance Fire Department that has been ill for several months and has had multiple surgeries, and tomorrow, we're actually going to be part of a procession that's going to help take him to a facility that's going to continue to help him heal and help him get well. But he is probably the most serious of all the firefighters in LA County that has been affected by this disease. So we continue, as a fire department, to make sure that we are practicing all the safe measures that we've put in place to keep our firefighters safe, and to date, we have only had the one positive case in our fire department.
Very good. That's good news. Thank you, thank you, Chief.
Thank you. How about other hospitals? Glendale Adventist and Verdugo Hospital? What's going on in there? They're testing for coronavirus?
Yes. Mr. Mayor, members of council, let me be clear. Glendale Memorial is still doing testing for their patients. They're just not, they're no longer doing the county site, the drive-through site. The other two hospitals did not have a drive-through site that was sponsored by the county, so they're still doing testing for their patients through their providers.
Thank you. Okay. Attorney, Mr. Garcia.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. The second portion of this presentation is regarding the emergency public orders that are due to expire tonight. The four are the residential and commercial eviction moratorium, which is two, the rent freeze, and the face covering order, and I'll go through them in order. So with respect to the residential eviction moratorium, obviously, it's valid for those individuals who cannot pay rent or have an inability to pay rent due to COVID-19 circumstances. Following the governor's, one of the governor's revised orders, the written notice provision required that the notice be provided prior to, apologies, prior to rent being due or appearing not to exceed seven days thereafter. And then the documentation of the COVID-related basis has to be provided at the first available time, the first time that back due rent is due. And that, again, was following the governor's eviction order from May. The repayment period is twelve months to repay rent, and in one of its most recent amendments, the council modified that to provide that twenty-five percent is due at each, at the end of each quarter, so that the tenants are not paying a hundred percent of that at the end of the twelve-month period. The landlord and tenant can agree to different repayment terms, obviously, and then if the tenant moves out during the repayment period, the entire payment becomes due immediately. And I'll talk, I'm going to talk about the two moratoriums and the rent freeze, and I'm going to go through what some of the other jurisdictions are doing on these items, and I'll also touch on what the governor and the California Judicial Council orders, how they currently apply. So on the commercial eviction moratorium, the written notice is due fourteen days prior to when rent is due. Same thing, the documentation must be provided showing an inability to pay for COVID-19-related reasons, and that information has to be, unlike the residential eviction moratorium, this information has to be provided at the time that the tenant, commercial tenant provides a notice of an inability to pay. The repayment period is six months for those employee, for those commercial tenants, unless they had a hundred or more employees pre-COVID, or they're publicly traded company, or they have eleven or more locations worldwide, and that was a couple of discussions ago that we had with the council. And then all the other tenants, and this again was because the repayment period was modified during this period, will have three months to repay that back due rent, as opposed to six months, and then they have to pay one-third at each month. With respect to the rent freeze, the rent freeze also expires this evening and essentially froze rent from the March twenty-fourth date and prohibits rent increase notices from occurring during the moratorium. And then if one had occurred prior to the moratorium or during the moratorium, a landlord will have to renotice that rent increase after the expiration of the moratorium. So if, for example, if it were to expire tonight, if a landlord wanted to increase rent in accordance with our procedures as well as current state law, they could, they'd have to reissue a notice and comply with the state law procedures. And then the rent freeze applies to all.
I'm sorry, Mr. Garcia, would you repeat one more time what you said?
Sure. So for any rent freezes, rent increases that a landlord is proposing, if they made, if they provided a notice before the moratorium or if they attempted to provide notice during the moratorium, those notices are essentially invalid, and the landlord will have to renotice the rent increase after the expiration of the moratorium. So if it expires tonight, then they could start doing that process tomorrow. If the council extends it, it would start whenever that period ends. And then the rent freeze applies to all units that are essentially exempt under Costa Hawkins, so, or not exempt, I should say. So the apartment buildings built after February one, nineteen ninety-five, individual condominium units and single-family dwelling units. It also pursuant to the council order applies to ADUs and to hotel rooms being rented as extended stay, so any hotel room rented for thirty days or more. I apologize if this is a little bit difficult to read, but I'll go through it. I just wanted to provide you some comparative data of what some of the other jurisdictions are doing in terms of their moratoria, as well as their rent freeze. As you can see, the county of Los Angeles' eviction moratorium, they just extended it last week to July thirty-first, as well as their rent freeze. Santa Monica is July thirty-first as well. Culver City is August thirty-first. The city of Los Angeles' moratorium is valid until the period of the local emergency and twelve months thereafter. So it's a lengthy moratorium for the residential, and then it's a three-month period for commercial. And then Pasadena's moratorium is valid until the length of their emergency. And then, as I discussed earlier, or as I mentioned earlier, the California Judicial Councils, they don't have a moratorium in place, but they are obviously preventing the issuance of summons for eviction proceedings to be issued. So whenever individual jurisdiction's moratorium expires, there's still going to be an inability of landlords to initiate any eviction proceedings until the period that is ninety days after the governor declares the state of emergency to be over. Obviously, we don't, that's not even at the light at the end of the tongue yet, so that's quite some time. The CJC did consider modifying this or maybe even terminating it, but it seemed to be a contentious discussion, but they made no change at this time. I think they are waiting to see if the state legislature will make any changes or implement some new rules, in which case then at that point, the CJC may relax its rules. The one thing I want to point out is, on the county of Los Angeles' orders, their eviction moratorium states that it applies to all residential. their eviction moratorium states that it applies to all, um, residential property, or all, all property, excuse me, within the county of Los Angeles, both in unincorporated areas and incor, incorporated areas. Meaning that if a city's, uh, doesn't have a moratorium or they let their moratorium expire, um, the county's eviction moratorium purportedly applies to incorporated cities. Um, I say purportedly because most, many city attorneys, including myself, believe that the county lacks the authority to impose that. Um, but I, I would note that at some point, if our eviction moratorium expires and the county's is still, is still in place, um, tenants will seek to take, to utilize the county's eviction moratorium to prevent future eviction proceedings. I just wanted to point that out to you. That doesn't mean we have to abide by it, but that's just, that's how the county is interpreting their eviction moratorium and surely the tenants will, will like to take advantage of that, utilize that as a defense if necessary.
Can I ask a, a, just a clarification?
Yes, thanks.
Um, the, uh, LA County's moratorium, is that, that's just residential that you're describing now, or is that residential and commercial?
It is residential and commercial.
So, so they're, they've extended their moratorium...
To July 31st.
...to the end of July. And could you just remind us what their, um, rules are for repayment?
Sure. Uh, let me pull it up. So if the, if the commercial tenant has 10 or more but fewer than 100 employees, uh, the, the commercial tenant has six months following the expiration of the moratorium to pay their rent? Um, and then for commercial tenants with more than 100 employees, or if they're multi-traded or public, multi-national or publicly traded, um, they will have... shall be, well, this is a typo. It sounds like it's due right away, once the, once it expires. So the larger tenants basically would have to pay it all back right away. But anybody between, any of the smaller will have six months to pay it back.
Okay. And that's consistent, at least part of it, with what we have?
If six months for...
Because we have a six-month...
Correct.
For under 100 employees.
Correct.
But then over 100, we have, we're saying three months?
Three months.
Okay.
Okay.
Um, so yeah, I just, and then the rent freeze, um...
I'm, I'm sorry. Wait for a minute. Uh, let me see. LA County, the courts are under LA County's jurisdiction, aren't they?
Uh, no, the, the courts are with, are, their rules, their administrative rules are governed by the California Judicial Council.
But they're LA County courts?
Well, there are courts, there's, there's Superior Court of LA County, but they're, they, all the courts are governed under this rule by the California Judicial Council, which is chaired by the Supreme, the, the, the chair of the Supreme Court.
California Supreme Court?
Right.
All right. Okay.
And then, so the county's, uh, rent freeze expires on July 31st and that only applies to unincorporated areas. So that's, that will have no effect on, on Glendale. Um, then the last order is the face coverings, um, order. And so the city took, you know, the lead on that in terms of, we, in terms of, in Glendale, we, our order was probably the broadest earlier than some of the other jurisdictions. Um, as you can see, the counties and the states are now just as broad or, or in many respects, uh, just as broad. Um, obviously, the counties, it's required at all, all times when a person leaves their place of residence and are or can be in contact with or walking near or past others, uh, or non-household members. So again, broad. The states is, um, again, you can see it up there, but it's, if you're in line, if you're, you're inside of an indoor, of any indoor public space, you're in line or waiting for healthcare services, uh, taking public transportation, engaged in work, when, when you're going to be within close proximity of individuals, not in your own office. Um, if you're outdoor in public spaces and, and maintaining a six-foot, um, uh, public distance is not, a social distance is not feasible, then masks are, as required as well. Um, numerous exceptions, these are the city exceptions, um, you know, many to go through, but, uh, just obviously highlight, you know, obviously children of, uh, age two and under, individuals with certain disabilities, individuals who are, have trouble breathing, um, and then obviously out rules for, uh, individuals working within offices if they're, they're going to be sharing a space or they're, they, they share an office space and other people will be using that space within the same, uh, one-day period, uh, for example. So those are, those are some of the, some of the examples that we went through last time and I'm certainly happy to answer questions, but as you know, ours is pretty broad, but so, so are our exceptions. Um, and then finally, the last item before you is, uh, simply ratification of, of the Director of Emergency Services, uh, emergency order waiving the outdoor dining permit fees for the alfresco dining program. Uh, the council actually discussed this a few weeks back, had a discussion consented to the city manager signing that waiver, um, and this is now just a required step, a procedural step to ratify the formal decision. So these are the outdoor dining permit fees for the alfresco program. The waiver is good through August 31st. So anybody coming in and requesting of the permit through August 31st, uh, which was the 90-day period for which this, this program was intended to apply, uh, will, will have these fees waived.
Okay. What I understand...
So I am happy to go through any part of this. I'll leave this up since you have, to give you a sense of...
What I understand, waiver of out, outdoor dining permit fees, and they, then the first item is 1,000 square feet parklets, right? If it's...
Correct.
Under 1,000.
Those, those are the size of the parklets?
No, but if it's somehow somebody managed more than 1,000, then what happens? They have to, what, pay fees?
I'd have to turn to Mr. Landis on that, but I believe so. But I, I think the intent was to, to have the parklets be 1,000 square feet or less.
Okay. If anybody wants to answer, welcome to come on.
There's different restaurants, there's different restaurants that use them. It's typically not just one, even though there may be a large spot, there's three, four that front that.
Yeah.
So I don't think that comes into an issue, does it?
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, couldn't hear you. You can hear me across before me?
Uh, it's, it says here waiver of outdoor dining permit fees, right? And then the number one is 1,000 square feet of parklet. So if it's 1,000, meaning up to 1,000? And what happens if it's over 1,000? On page, oh, there is on page number...
The, the parklets don't exceed 1,000 square feet.
So they can't have...
These are to use the parklet? So if, if you were, you calculated and estimated, nobody would be using more than 1,000 square feet. That's why it's, if the example is based on 1,000 square feet.
Okay. Thank you.
And one, just one other point I wanted to make, Mr. Mayor, members of council, is the governor also had a residential eviction moratorium, uh, order which expired on its own terms on May 31st. Uh, he did extend the orders which, uh, specifically allowed local jurisdictions to adopt eviction moratorium. So the council still has that authority pursuant to the governor's order, but he did not extend his, the statewide, the statewide order.
I have just thinking myself before I go to my colleagues. I mean, I would like to see that we go along with County of Los Angeles where it says until July 31st, 2020, and review this item again, maybe, I don't know, Los Angeles, County of Los Angeles. So maybe we, uh, extend this until that time?
I understand. We, I don't know if council wants to ask questions, but you have, you have callers wanting to speak.
Okay. Let's go to the callers first. I'm sorry. Uh, go ahead, Mr. Jimmy.
Armin, you're live. Armin?
Yeah, hi. My name is Armin Mardustian. I'm a commercial property owner in Glendale. Um, my property is only four units and unfortunately, ever since this pandemic hit, my businesses were shut for a month or so, but I've been working ever since May. Most of them receive PPA, the PPP loan, EIDL. And right now, since they know they don't have to pay my rent, what they do is they use all their revenue from their businesses and they pay their vendors. And when the time, time comes for rent, they tell me, look, I have no money I cannot pay. Why are the landlords supposed to be banks? This is not public housing. This is not, I mean, my son is not using my space or my property. So why should landlords be pub, be acting like their property is public housing? Number two, what happens if there's no back seen for another 18 months? Does that mean no rents are due for another 18 months? Is that fair to the landlord? The landlords have not received PPP money, any kind of EIDL money or any kind of, I mean, grants. Tomorrow, businesses are eligible for $5,000 grants from the city. Last month, Mayor, I mean, I'm sorry, Councilmember Brodmann was one of the catalysts that wanted to, um, box forward a motion to extend the payback from three months for commercial to six months. I don't get why I'm going backwards. It's already been three or four months and by doing that, we set the wrong precedence for the tenants to intentionally and maliciously not pay their landlords. This is very, very tough on me. For example, before the pandemic hit, for commercial property, there is no rent control. But for residential property, there is rent control. Why is that? Because on a commercial property, the guy is using the space to make money. He's doing business there. I understand on residential side, if there's a single, single parent with three kids, I do have a little sympathy for that person. But somebody who, who's received all this money, right now in Glendale, California, if you buy a house, you cannot find a house for less than a million dollars. And if you want to buy a house, there's 20 or 25 offers on the property. Why is that? Because the economy is doing very, very well. A lot of people are doing better now than they were three or four months ago because of $3 trillion package that passed the federal government. Please, let's put an end to this. Please, um, lower the payback to three months. Let's lift the moratorium today for commercial. And also, um, let's not compare city of Glendale to city of Los Angeles. Let's not compare us to South Central LA or East LA. Glendale's an incorporated city and it's a great city, it's al, and it's always been a great city. Please be fair to the landlords for once. Please, let's go back and make the commercial three months and let's lift the moratorium effective today. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next.
Nathaniel? You're live, Nathaniel?
Hi there. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Hi, uh, my name is Nathaniel Yonk and, uh, I'm calling on behalf of the Glendale Tenant Union. Um, I'm encouraged to hear that the city council is considering following the Los Angeles County, uh, extension of the, uh, rent, of the eviction moratorium, and I would urge you to do so. Um, but I have another question too about the economic side of things. We have in the past talked about the, um, you know, the right, the, the, the net, the need for businesses to, uh, stay open, pretty small businesses and people that make their money that way. But you have to think about the other half of that equation, the buyers, the customers. If the people who would be the customers have no buying power, then what's the point of giving any kind of benefit to the businesses? There's no way for them to make any money without us. That's really all I had to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next.
Sam, you're live. Sam?
Hi. Thank you so much for taking my call. Um, good evening. So, uh, my name is Sam. I, I live in Glendale, California, and I'm calling because I'm really concerned, uh, because I'm a renter and my rent is going to be going up. Um, I know that, I actually just found out that the rent increase notice that I received during the moratorium is null. However, as of tomorrow, I could be presented with a new rent increase. Um, I am a frontline worker. My hours have been cut drastically due to the coronavirus pandemic and I'm also a nursing student and my income isn't getting any higher. And because I can't work anymore than I was before because of the pandemic, um, I don't know how we're expected to have a rent increase at this time. I'm asking if we could somehow alleviate this additional burden, um, and avoid madness essentially, um, by extending the moratorium until 2021. Um, I really hope this doesn't seem like a distraction to anyone, but as a renter, um, this is what we need right now. Um, as someone who doesn't have the money, we need the moratorium to continue. And that's all I have to say on that.
Thank you. Next one.
Ike, you're live. Ike?
Um, by extending the moratorium. Hello?
Ike, yes, go ahead. You're live. You can hear you.
Yeah. Uh, sorry. Uh, hello, uh, good evening, folks. Uh, this is Councilman, this is Al Mahmudan. I'm a tenant in Glendale and a member of Glendale Tenant Union. Uh, I'm calling because I'm very concerned about the immense health and economic toll that COVID-19 has had on thousands upon thousands of renters and will continue to have for the unforeseeable future. I'm enraged at your living discussion of eviction and rent freeze moratorium to the last day before expiration, showing how little you care about the fears, worries, and stress of Glendale renters. That's, and myself being one of them. So I must remind you again, I am, and my neighbors are 72,000 rent burdened tenants in Glendale and residents in Glendale. Economically, we are tens of thousands of most vulnerable residents. Your living this discussion to the last day best symbolizes how you see us as disposable. The irony is, some of you, Arah and Paula in particular, are so loudly anti-renter and anti-working class, I rather ask you to do nothing. Because as the city attorney was pointing out earlier, um, where if you do nothing, the LA County protections would kick in, which are actually significantly stronger than what you came up with. The least council members can do to be accountable to your most vulnerable residents to, is to either match LA County's moratorium or let our moratorium expire and to cancel rent and mortgages during COVID-19 periods. You are directly responsible for my own fear and oppression and that of tens of thousands of my neighbors. I invite anyone listening who is interested to fight for tenants' rights to join Glendale Tenant Union. And city council, if you want to claim that you see tenants as human beings, match LA County's moratorium, cancel rent for the COVID-19 period. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Demorian? Demorian, you're live. Demorian?
Hi there. Yes, um, good evening, uh, council members. Um, with all due respect, as well as we're here, I believe everyone in most of Glendale's asking for an extension on the eviction moratorium on all residential evic, uh, evictions as well as, uh, businesses. But, uh, hopefully, um, what I can give for reasoning is also a little bit more eye-opening in the sense that I'm not sure as how, where you are, but the country itself right now is going through quite a bit of turmoil, both politically and culturally. And a lot of places that were once considered safe, especially a lot of suburban areas in different states, all the way from the West Coast down to the East Coast and the Midwest, are succumbing to a lot of political and cultural violence. And I believe at least thankfully, Glendale has maintained, uh, almost completely isolated and protected from a lot of these, uh, cultural revolutions, thankfully to the help of a lot of our, of the citizens and to the work of the police department and the firefighters. So I would like to at least encourage that we all obtain a greater extension for the residential, for the residential eviction moratorium due to the fact that our city remains to be one of the safe havens of, um, Los Angeles County amidst all of these, amidst all this violence and a lot of this turmoil and that we wouldn't want to push any of our residents to, to have to seek new, new living in some of these other locations, whether it be Los Angeles County or further south or even out of state, due to the fact that they may be pushed to these areas that not only put their lives on hold, but in fact also probably put their lives in jeopardy due to a lot of the maintenance at the safety place. So I really do urge that we adopt an extension to this eviction moratorium and encourage even possibly the cancellation of some of these, of some of the rent that a lot of people owe because unfortunately, a lot of businesses are opening up at an extremely slow pace, understandably due to the, due to the pandemic and due to the governor's orders. But if we can at least hold off and possibly change up the repayment plan to some way, we can at least encourage, uh, Glendale residents to continue remaining in Glendale and leading their peaceful lives as they've always wanted, and continue encouraging a more wholesome society here in our city. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Next.
Ernest, you're live, Ernest? Ernest, can you hear me? Ernest? Ernest? Ernest, can you hear me?
Caller?
Ernest?
Let's go, let's go to the next one.
Silva, you're live, Silva?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Uh, yes, I'm a landlord, I'm a mom and pop landlord, and, uh, I would like to ask, um, everybody's worried about the tenants, and I'm just worried about how I'm going to pay my mortgage if my tenants keep not paying their rent. Uh, my husband was sick last year, so he couldn't work, and our jobs, right now we are self-employed, and our jobs got canceled. And, uh, I can hear myself on the, and, uh, I, I'm just worried about how I'm going to pay my mortgage if my tenants don't pay the rent. I mean, I, I, I don't charge a lot of rent, I'm a very reasonable landlord, and I upkeep my building as needed, but I need those rents. I live off of those rents. And, uh, if I don't get paid, I can't live, and I can't pay my mortgage, and I could lose my building that my husband and I, we worked our whole life, two jobs each, raising our children, and now we cannot pay the mortgage and lose the building because the tenants are not going to pay the rent. And... And, uh, I'm just worried that, you know, that the tenants are taking advantage, they don't want to pay the rent, and, but we have to pay our mortgage, we have to pay electricity, we have to pay gas, we have to pay insurance, and we have to pay everything. So I would really appreciate it if the landlords would consider it. I also want to ask, why is it that the buildings that are built after 1995, they get the break and we don't? You know, everybody's worried about the tenants. I used to be a tenant, I know what that is, but now I'm a landlord because I worked really hard to be able to buy this building, and now I'm going to lose it while I'm ready to retire, because nobody wants to pay the rent. And I know these people can afford to pay the rent. So, thank you for listening to me. I just want to be considered, we're, just because we are landlords, that doesn't mean we have money stacked up and we, we are rich. We're not. If we don't get rents, we can't pay mortgage. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next.
Haley, you're on the air, Haley?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, go ahead.
Hi, so, I'm a member of the Glendale Tenant Union, and I've been calling to ask you guys to extend Glendale's rent freeze and eviction moratorium and protections for a while, um, and that's what I'm calling about tonight. And, I don't know, I mean, many, many other tenants and I have been calling over the past few months and warning about what could happen come July first, and I'm a bit baffled that you've waited until this last moment to finally address this. Um, I spend a lot of time drafting what I want to say to you guys on the phone each week when I call in, and I feel like I've tried so many different approaches. There have been meetings when I've tried to be gentle in my approach and share stories with you about tenants that I'm doing casework with, trying to humanize their experiences for you, trying to share our struggles and our pain and our fears about eviction, about not being able to pay rent or support our families. And other times I've called in and I've just felt so upset and tired that maybe I've just let my anger speak more, and it's hard. It's been so exhausting to have to call in week after week, trying to prove my own humanity to you, along with the humanity of my neighbors, you know, begging for empathy and support from you, the people who have power to make these decisions. Um, and these are decisions that can and will impact people's lives in irreparable ways, you know, if they're the wrong decisions. I'm horrified at the thought of what could happen if the eviction moratorium were to suddenly be lifted and the ban on rent freezes ended. There are a lot of landlords looking to prey on people who are no less vulnerable than they were when this all started in March, and they will exploit this situation. You know, again, having extra money that you make profiting off of housing, which is a human right, is not the same as losing your entire income due to COVID, you know, if you lost your job. And for the landlords calling in that are, you know, quote unquote, reasonable, like the woman who spoke before me, I mean, they should reach out to their mortgage lenders and ask for forbearance. That has been available to them this entire time. Tenants don't really have a version of that. We are, you know, at the will of, of whatever you passed for us that, that protects us. And so I really urge you to extend these protections because, as, you know, you, the previous items we're talking about, COVID-19 is the highest it's ever been in the rates of it in Los Angeles, and we are the highest rates in the country. So this isn't over, it's, it's worse than it was when this started. It, it, it would be completely senseless and, and heartless to, to stop these protections for renters. Um, I yield the rest of my time, thank you.
Thank you very much. Next.
Rick, you're live, go ahead, Rick?
Thank you very much. Good evening, Mayor Agajanian, uh, all council members, of course, city manager and city staff, thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. Um, I'm going to keep my comments short tonight. My name is Rick Lemo, of course, and I am representing only the Greater Downtown Glendale Association. The reason why I'm going to keep my comments short tonight is I have taken advantage of your time by writing all of you, but also the first couple, three callers that were property owners were more eloquent than I ever could be. We have been trying for weeks, as the Downtown Glendale Association and individual property owners, for you to please understand the hurt that our property owners are going through. An earlier gentleman said, is it the responsibility of property owners by themselves to be the bank? Remember that the only element in this puzzle that is getting zero government subsidy are property owners. So much so that even though some of the money received from government sources is supposed to be set aside to pay at least a small portion of rent, as a property owner explained earlier, that's not happening. I know that you have nothing but good intentions on your mind when you're making these rules. But it's important to keep in mind that sometimes there are consequences that prove the old saying, the road to hell is paved with great intentions. What we're asking you to do tonight is to please do no more arm. Every single two-week, three-week, thirty-day process, landlords and property owners are adjusting to fit the way the goal, the goalpost keeps getting moved. Please don't move it anymore. You've done a very good job of trying to be ultra-fair. The property owners have not had any benefit like that. Let's end it tonight. Let's not extend it anymore. If the county does extend it, then our property owners are going to have to deal with that. But at least they're not fighting the city that they pay to support. Remember that our property owners, particularly in the downtown Glendale district, assess themselves to keep our city streets clean, to provide ambassadors on the street, to provide over a hundred thousand dollars in charitable support, which is now frozen because many of them don't know if they're going to be able to last through the end of the year. The banks will take over their property. So please, one time tonight, please defer to the needs of the small property owners. Remember one thing, no one's going to be getting evicted, the courts aren't open. And it, and a landlord doesn't want to evict a tenant, they want to work with the tenant. Most landlords have already extended twenty-five, fifty, sixty percent rent deferral for these folks, but to eliminate it totally takes the landlords and property owners out of the negotiation business. So please, tonight, this time, please support them. Thank you so much for your service. Have a pleasant evening.
Thank you very much. What's next caller, please?
Fernanda, you're live, Fernanda?
Hello, I am a tenant in Glendale. Feeling very emotional because just how the previous caller said that they're tired of calling and seeing no results, and then this landlord is saying that they're hurt. Please tell me which renter owns property? We don't own anything, that's why we're renters. And then you're expecting us to pay on top of our rent payback rent that we weren't able to, like, pay in the first place because of this pandemic, which we had no control of, and then also for that, pay a rent increase? All of you are so evil. Honestly, I fear for my neighbors on the increased evictions, I fear we're losing our homes, and just throughout the whole, just all this is so tiring, it is so tiring, and you guys are just so evil. There is no faith in all of you because you show it time and time again, that you are always going to be in favor of the landlord, you are always seeking that money, that money that they, they prey on us, that we're really craving to get to pay our rent. It is just so heartbreaking and tiring. These are property owners, meaning they have more than one property that they're owning. What tenant owns property? We have to pay for our living, our homes, we have our family, and you guys just so easily dismiss all of that, dismiss everything that we've been trying to tell you, and, I'm sorry, I just can't.
Next caller, please.
Pamela, you're live, Pamela? Pamela?
Yes, hello.
Go ahead.
Pamela Gustine, and I'm a tenant in Glendale. And I agree with the mayor, Agajanian, you, the Glendale City Council, must extend the eviction moratorium to match the county of Los Angeles's ordinance. But while you are watching the county's timeline, matching the town, county's timeline, you must also meet and exceed its protection. One immediate step is to get rid of the ridiculous quarterly repayment plan that Councilmember Brodmann initiated some weeks back. Doing so will mean that Glendale's repayment plan will be following the LA County ordinance. Second, I urge you to think beyond the current examples in our county and motion to adopt stronger protections like a repayment plan of two years, or better yet, follow Supervisor Solis's example, and move to initiate a study of how rent debt forgiveness can be paired with mortgage forgiveness. You must also institute stronger protections against harassment from landlords who continue to this day to demand repayment from their tenants, who are currently facing COVID-19 hardship. A majority of Glendale tenants are still facing layoffs and reduced hours due to COVID-19. In addition, the county of LA has had a new record just this weekend of cases increasing, telling us that economic and health impacts to residents continue. Furthermore, I'm just tired of hearing from property owners that they are hurting. The fact is that every landlord and property owner is protected by the judicial council ruling against foreclosure. Y'all should call your banks, negotiate a repayment plan, and if you didn't know this, there you go, this is what Glendale Tenant Union does, we inform our community about resources. There are more protections for you property owners than tenants, yet it is the tenants who are most likely to be essential workers. It is the tenants who are facing homelessness. It is the tenants who, according to UCLA's recent report, over three hundred thousand of LA County residents could face homelessness once the governor's and the judicial council ruling is lifted. And let me remind you that you must act. We are standing in a historic moment of solidarity in a movement in defense of black lives, yet it is our black brothers and sisters who are facing homelessness. It is them who are also facing high rent, rent stress. I'm sharing this, council members, because this is the moment that we are living in. It is imperative that you city council members lead and not fall back to ridiculous pre-COVID times. The moment today demands bold and innovative action, and I hope that you make that clear today with your motion. Good night.
Thank you. Next caller, please.
Linda, you're live, Linda? Linda, can you hear me? Linda, can you hear me? Linda? Linda, you're live, can you hear me? Linda, can you hear me? Mayor, would you like me to go next caller?
That was the last caller?
No, there's one more.
Please go to the next one.
Vince, you're live, can you hear me, Vince?
Yes, sir.
Go ahead.
Okay, um, I would like to, if, if this pleases everyone, I'd like to give a philosophical illustration of why the moratorium should be in alignment with LA, is that okay? I'd like to be a, a little more philosophical about this. So, as a business owner in Glendale the last ten years, I'm a caterer, okay? I'm a, I'm a private chef caterer. Needless to say, this is went out the window in the advent of COVID. So, I opted to, right before this armed plot, expand my job opportunities just to have a safe, I'm a contractor from Orson Healthcare. So this is a really, really big company. Compass Group is the biggest food provider in the world, okay? We don't even have to look up the statistics here, but sa, it's safe to say that they, um, downsized all non-essentials, we were out the door with this. So I illustrate right here, my business is not in Glendale, my, my business is not, as much as I've tried, it does not concern the, the Glendale residents. They're not the one buying my catering, they're not the one, the, the ones, um, paying for my consultation in healthcare, okay? And I'm a skilled professional with food. So here's what I'm trying to illustrate, is that I rely on Los Angeles. Why is Glendale a separate entity with this? They should be in complete alignment as, as is the economy of its, of it, of the residents. Do you, do you understand what I'm saying? Why would, why would there be a separation? If the jewel city was, that, that very moniker was an effort to incorporate, we want to compete with Burbank and all these, that's what made us, but that's how we based our economy, that's why we're a capital city, an enclave. Why all of a sudden will we not be in alignment? Do you understand what I mean? That as a resident, my business comes from Los Angeles, my business comes from Pasadena, my business comes from here and there. Why would we be an isolated, with, as, as a, as a tenant, how, what, what, what do you, I'm not a deadbeat, what, what do you expect me to do? I've already expanded my opportunities. Why, why do I have to pay rent back, you know? Glendale needs to make concessions here. You know, just like we got creative when we put in all the parking meters in Americana that didn't read the time, so we could rake, rake in more money off people. Well, we need to get creative, we need to, we need to subsidize these, I don't, I don't know how, how to do it, but even the mayor, you were confused at the beginning of this, in the, in the convoluted explanation. The lawyer was confused when you asked him the question, he didn't even know the answer. Let, let's think more philosophically. We should be in alignment with Los Angeles here. I, as a resident, my business doesn't come from Glendale, it's not in Florida. I'm not a deadbeat here, and I get where the, I'm not one of the, I'm not someone from the tenement, from the perspective here. I'm not that guy, I'm not the guy that says, we're, the rent should be posted for crap, I'm being philosophical here. It should be a case-by-case basis, it's just like the, and, and part of my reason for calling was the excrement that's getting left in my neighborhood. Nobody's picking this up, and nobody knows who picks it up. We need to get more philosophical with this, guys. The police don't even want to get involved on a civil level, on the, on the local level, we need to talk about this. You know, we did decide where our money's being spent.
Thank you very much.
Get more integrated.
Thank you.
Yeah?
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Uh, do we have any other call?
Yes, Mayor, one more. Alan, you're live, Alan?
Um, hi, um, I'm a landlord here in, in Glendale, and I do feel very, very bad for the, for the folks out there who are renters. Uh, I want to talk to the, to, to, to the City of Glendale, to let them know that there are landlords that this is their business, that they don't, you know, this is how they put food on the table, how they pay their bills is by renting out homes and apartments that, you know, need to be paid for. The fallacy that the bank will suddenly not want their mortgage payments is, is, is ridiculous. Uh, as a landlord, I still have to pay the As a landlord, I still have to pay the mortgage, I've provided a service. So the idea that there are evil landlords out there, which I suspect there might be, that are looking to take advantage of the situation, I'm sure they are, but there's a good number that are like, we need to get paid as well. I have tenants that haven't paid me since well before the COVID-19 crisis. So there are no safeguards other than perhaps, you know, putting your trust in a bank that we have no clue what they're going to do after this is over. The city of Glendale has made a lot of assumptions that tenants have money in the bank, that they're, you know, they're living high on the hog. We're not. If the city can afford to let the renters not pay, and the idea that the renters now are saying, "Well, we don't have to pay, we don't want to pay, we don't have jobs." I understand that, but it doesn't seem that the rent, the tenant, excuse me, the landlords have to take the brunt of it. If the city of Glendale can come up with a solution for the landlords, like having tenants get funds somehow through the city to pay the landlords, the situation would be just, would be a little bit better. But right now, I'm hearing a lot of tenants, a lot of renters, who think that landlords are just sitting around just collecting money. We're actually struggling just as much as they are.
Thank you very much. Do we have another call?
Yes, the line just went on, Mayor, I have one more caller for you.
Let's go to it.
Mary, you're live, Mary?
Hello?
Yes, go ahead, you're live.
Hi, good evening, Mayor and city council members. I would like to ask you to extend the moratorium on rent fees and evictions and other rental protections. Because landlords have, you know, the extension on mortgages, forbearance, and also SBC loans and other help at this time. And also, over the past few years, they have made great savings from all the rental increases they have charged to the tenants. And at this time, you know, those who are paying their rent, even under these circumstances with the great inflation, at this time, it's really inhumane to have any rent increase at such circumstances. In other, in the city of L.A., they have extended their rent fees for one year, and other cities have extended at least until December. And in Glendale, right now, there is a great people who are leaving the city, they cannot afford their rent, and there are landlords who actually want to increase the rent at a time when everyone is going under great hardship, and they can barely survive, their savings are being exhausted. It's very, very inhumane for landlords to expect tenants to pay extra, especially when the rents in Glendale have unjustifiably gone up over the past years just because new buildings were built. Not because of shortages, those buildings are not all completely full, there is a shortage of affordable housing. And so at a time like this, it's really important for the council members to act with their humanity and consider all those people living in Glendale, all the elderly who are in fixed income, and now they have to pay extra for all the food, for everything that they have to buy and that they cannot afford. So this is not only affecting people who are unable to go to work, it's affecting everyone. And why should the landlords profit at a time like this when everyone is suffering? And they have already made great savings from all the rents, they have increased all the rents over the years, this past few years. A lot of people who were longtime residents of Glendale, who loved living here, were forced to leave because of their actions. And at a time like this, you know, more tenants who love their city, who should not be forced to live, leave their city, who they were living here for 30 years or more because of greedy landlords. It's really a time of humanity and being a human at such a very difficult time. Then, you know, people are calling and just saying, "Oh, their mom and pop," they have a lot of help, but tenants don't have those. And they have great savings that they made out of the back of the tenants. The tenants didn't, instead of having savings, they had to give all the savings they had before to the landlords because they have to increase the rent unjustifiably. So I urge you to extend the rent fees and also other protections, but you know, you should extend the rent fees for longer because this is affecting all the tenants of Glendale. There are the constituents who voted for you, and majority of the residents in Glendale are tenants. So those are the people who are voting for you, and you need to listen to them and represent them and understand the hardship that they are going through. And their hardship is uncomparable to what landlords are talking about. They have made huge, huge savings because of the rent increases. They were just inhumane and unjustifiable.
Thank you.
So I urge you to extend all the moratorium on rent fees and others, and be compassionate to the renters.
Thank you. Do we have any other call, Mr.?
Yes, Mayor, we do have one more caller. Would you like me to stop accepting new calls?
Yes, please.
After this point, yeah. Take this one and then no more calls.
Okay.
Thank you. Linda, you're live, Linda?
Oh, hello, thank you for taking my call. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, thank you. Many people have called tonight and were very eloquent in their words about the tenants in Glendale who obviously are still rent burdened as they were before COVID. And these tenants, we cannot pay our rent if we are unemployed. And you know as well as I do that jobs have not gotten back to order. So it makes only sense that people will not be, should not be forced to pay rent at this time. So I really want you to consider having the rent cancellation and having, obviously, the eviction moratorium. But I think you don't have to do this without the help from the state because there are bills, assembly bills, that you could look into, SB 1410 and AB 1436. One helps the landlords a lot, and the other helps tenants. You can look into both of these bills if they are married, then that would help these, it would help tenants in Glendale, and it would also help landlords. So I hope that you're not just riding on the coattails of other cities who are just trying to catch up and doing things in the last minute. I hope you're thinking proactively and looking into some of these bills that can help people in the long run. I want to thank you for your time tonight. Bye-bye.
Thank you very much. Okay. We said this is the last call, so the, so before I go to my council members, my colleagues, I was going to make it easy and do what County of Los Angeles was, is done. So I'm going to extend whatever items we have in here until July 31 of 2020. Because I feel that businesses are not doing well yet. And the tenants, the residents, they did not go back to their jobs, their work. So I have this feeling that it's very hard to pay rent, and I understand landlords have obligations too, to fulfill, to pay the payments. So to make it easy and have more time and see how, is my time over now? To make sure that we're going to have a better picture of how the economy will look like in a month's time. So I was suggesting to extend all these items until end of July 1st. But however, to my colleagues, who wants to go first? Mr. Brotman, Councilman Brotman?
Yes.
Microphone?
Right.
Microphone?
Oh. Sorry, I was saying, could we break this up? So we have the issue of masks, we have the issue of the alfresco. And then, you know, for this whole issue of renters and landlords, you know, maybe we have the commercial, we have the residential, and we have the rent freeze. I think it might be helpful, because I have comments on all of them, but I think it'll be confusing if we're kind of going across all these issues. Would that be acceptable to take them one by one?
It's yours. We can take one by one or all together as you wish.
Okay, well, I'll start with the eviction moratorium and rent freeze. I have a few questions to start with, so one question for the city attorney, so.
Go with the numbers, if you want to do that one by one, go with numbers. A1, A2, which one you want to start with?
8A1 or 8A2? Um.
8A?
The one is commercial, two is residential, and three is rent freeze.
I guess I'd like to talk about one and two first.
Okay. 8A1 and 8A2?
Yeah, I'm just trying to understand, so there's the issue of the judicial council. So if we were, let's say, to end the moratorium today, what would that really mean? Because landlords can't, they can't, you know, proceed with any form of eviction. What would that mean in terms of, I guess, the back rent and the obligations to pay that? Would there be penalties? Could you elaborate a little on that?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, correct. So evictions wouldn't start happening tomorrow if these orders expired, because as you know, the CJC order prohibits, wouldn't allow those proceedings to go forward. But, correct, on the eviction moratoria, if they expire, at that point, rent is due for July 1st, and then that starts the clock ticking for repayment, whether it's 12 months for residential, or six months for commercial, or three months for the group that is not eligible for fiscal. So that process starts, and if, and when the CJC order does get, if it gets amended, for example, or if it terminates, and at that point, if the tenant does not, has not started repaying under the terms of the moratoria, or they haven't paid their rent for July, then at that point, yes, landlords will be able to start enforcing their rights in the courts.
Okay.
And then, and then also, currently, the moratoria order also do not allow penalties and interest and fees to be charged during this time of non-payment. But if they expire, then if there are terms in those leases that allow for that, then landlords would be able to charge those as well.
Okay. Yeah, I think, you know, this is obviously tough for all of us. You know, listening to the callers, it's quite upsetting. You know, people are hurting on all sides of this equation. I tend to agree that overall, speaking overall as a group, you know, renters are much more vulnerable than landlords. I mean landlords have assets, tenants generally don't. But that's a generalization. Obviously, there are some landlords who are living on the edge as far as being able to service their mortgage, and, you know, for them, that would be disastrous to lose everything that they have, you know? And, you know, some renters certainly, you know, are living on a fixed income or maybe still working and really are fine. So it's just, this is what makes this so incredibly difficult for us, is how do we parse those that really have a need? And how do we protect those landlords that really are vulnerable? And I don't, we don't have a solution to that, obviously. We're going to have to use a hammer when, I wish we could use a scalpel, but that's kind of where we are. I did want to just mention, because one of the callers brought up SB 1410, and I want to make sure that people in the public understand that we have not just been sitting on our hands here and trying to figure out how the pie gets divided up. This bill, SB 1410, as I've mentioned before, this is the bill that would give tenants 10 years to repay back rents. The state would stand in the middle, would make the landlords whole, and then collect from the tenants over 10 years, with the opportunity to then forgive some of those rents for tenants that are truly in need. So this bill came out of efforts here in Glendale. Not entirely, it was certainly modified in Sacramento, but the genesis of it was here. So I would like people to understand that we have been working to find a real solution. SB 1410 just recently passed through the Senate. It was a concept, it became a bill, it's actually been voted on on the floor of the Senate, it's now on the assembly side. I don't know what its prospects are, but we've been trying to find a way so that we're not just passing the pain from one group to the other. Because this is something that I know for all of us, it breaks our hearts. We don't want to be here having to do this. So I just want to say that as far as personally for me, I would, on the tenant, on the residential side, I am inclined to extend that moratorium to the end of July in line with L.A. County. And I wouldn't even mind if we did an extension, I don't know if we can structure it this way, that just, we just say we're going to follow L.A. County on this. I'll just leave that open, but I'm inclined to push that out. That's for residential. On commercial, I'm less inclined to do it on commercial. I mean, businesses are now, for the most part, able to open. I know with limited capacity and all the rest of it. And I wouldn't be surprised if we start getting shutdowns again. So I would be inclined probably to let that one expire, although I'm, either way, I could go to July 31st, I could let it expire, with the understanding that that may come back, because we may see shutdowns again. We may have to revisit this sooner than the end of next month. So that's where I am. I'll hold my comments on the rent freeze, because I guess if that's okay, we can come back to that as a separate item.
All right. Any other comments?
Well.
Councilmember?
Thank you. Well, certainly the emotions are high. I think in the last couple of weeks, I've been called a racist, I've been called evil, I've been called inhumane. I think that there is a severe, there is a severe negative impact on the property owners. Property owners who, in many cases, have put their entire life's efforts into purchasing a piece of property. And if they lose that, they lose it all. A tenant who is evicted has eviction safeguards in the courts. There's currently state and federal monies that are going to him or her. So, you know, when the question is who loses more if rent is not paid, I think that's a good question for debate. Because I think in many regards, the property owners lose more. That being said, that being said, what's unfortunate here is as we're spending our time and our efforts and hearing the callers and the public urging us to take one action or another, we are like the flea on the dog, if you will. Because above us is the County of Los Angeles that sets their own rules on eviction moratorium, on the rent freeze. Above the County of Los Angeles is the State of California, who is marching to the tune of their own drummer. And above the governor's office, the State of California, and the legislature, is the judicial council that sets the laws for the courts. And currently has a 90-day time clock, which hasn't even started yet. Because that 90 days, the moratorium on evictions, doesn't start until the state of emergency is lifted, which hasn't even, we don't even, we can't even predict when that's going to occur. So we're sitting here, we're fighting our neighbors, our residents, we're getting called racist, inhumane, by both sides, actually, both sides, the property owners and the tenants. I would like to follow up with something Mr. Brotman said. I would like to not extend any of our moratorium ordinances. My understanding is that we would default to whatever the county rule is then. I would not like to extend any rent freeze. I understand we would default into the county rule at that point. And I think commercial enterprises are seeing the light of day. Certainly, the traffic on the streets, at least in Glendale. Certainly, the traffic on the streets, at least in Glendale, there's quite a lot more activity. I was in Beverly Hills over the weekend, and that was really a dead. But in Glendale, there is a lot of economic activity. Most of the restaurants are open, up and down Bramble Boulevard. So, I would like to not do anything. Let our orders expire, and by order of the county, default to their eviction moratorium. But don't forget, the county is trumped by the California Judicial Council that says we can't do anything for 90 days until the eviction, until the state of emergency is lifted. So, we're really, we're the bad guys here. And we shouldn't be the bad guys. Because there are powers above us that are much more powerful than we are. And my suggestion would be to let our ordinances for the moratorium and the rent freeze, commercial and residential, expire. If by order of law, the county ordinances kick in, or the California Judicial Council's moratorium on filing unlawful detainer actions rules over all of that, then that's what we should do. We're sitting here, you know, we're getting whipsawed here. And the powers above us are, you know, are laughing at us as we try and do the good job of listening to our residents, trying to understand what's going on. But we're really insignificant in this. And that's my understanding, and that's my position. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Brotman.
Mrs. Devine?
The impassioned arguments from both sides have definitely left an impact on me. I mean, just listening to what our residents are going through, both tenants and landlords, puts us in a very difficult position. But that's why we were elected, be here and make the tough decisions. And I don't anticipate that there's going to be any decision that we make that will satisfy either side entirely. As some of my colleagues have mentioned, some of these issues are a bit out of our control. You know, we can impress our needs as much as we can on our state legislature and on federal representatives. And we must continue to do so. But we do have to figure out what we can do to alleviate some of the impact. And I know that we've done some work. But I am concerned that what we've set out to do will not be nearly enough. And, you know, one of the callers, I think it was Pamela. Certainly, there were some folks that made some really good points. Silva, who's a landlord, talked about their family's situation and the fact that they're a small mom and pop landlord. And I've spoken to a number of folks in the same predicament. But Pamela was mentioning a UCLA report about how some of the essential workers are some of the most severely impacted. And many of them happen to be renters. You know, when we go into the grocery stores and we're doing our shopping, we have to realize many of these folks are people who work for minimum wage, who've been working very, very hard, working overtime, putting their own lives at risk to help provide for the community. You know, tenants are put out on the street. If they're evicted, it becomes a lot harder for these folks to find a new place to rent. First and last month's rent, security deposit, all of these things add up. I don't know how we're going to get through this. But I do know that I think it makes sense to tack on our policies or to walk in step with the county, at least at this juncture, revisit this. But I'd also like us to, and I'd like everyone watching and listening to realize that the idea of complete rent forgiveness is unrealistic. We've talked about this domino effect that could impact the economy in far greater ways with repercussions for years to come. So, at least in this regard, I'm fine with either going with the county. And I'd like to ask for clarification from our legal counsel. Or, as Councilmember Najarian suggested, to let everything expire which defaults to the county. But I do think that there needs to be some sort of clear protections for those individuals that are at greatest risk.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, thank you for the question. Because I was going to try to clarify it. I think there's an open question whether or not the counties, we will default to the county's rules if we do not extend. And the reason I say that is because there is some serious legal dispute as to whether or not the county has the authority to pose this type of order in a municipality. They clearly have the authority to do it in an unincorporated area. But it's not clear. So, I think there will be, if we did default, if we did not extend with the hopes of that we would be defaulting to the county's rule, I think there would be legal disputes between landlords and tenants as far as the applicability of that rule. So, my suggestion or my advice is if the council wants to extend it through July, then the council should do that and not rely on the county's rule. With respect to the rent freeze, it clearly, on its terms, only applies to the county unincorporated areas. So, if the council wants to extend that, it definitely has to adopt the resolution extending that through July 31st or whatever other period the council deems appropriate.
Well, thank you for that. Hopefully, that brings some clarification as to what is in front of us and what we have to do. I also would like to, again, send a message out there that, you know, everyone owes money to someone. Whether it's a family paying their home's mortgage, whether it's a landlord paying the mortgage, whether they are living off of it or not, or, you know, or the renters who are paying their landlords. And it doesn't matter how we got here, we're all in the same boat. Now, we have to figure this out. I do want staff to start, I'd like to ask staff to start the work of preparing residents, landlords, for the inevitability, perhaps as soon as the beginning of August, that, you know, we will have to have a serious reckoning in figuring out how we're going to have to make these back payments. Because it cannot continue indefinitely. I don't know what the county is going to do. I can't predict it. But I can only imagine that what would happen if this situation continued. I don't want to envision it. Because then we start coming back and having the more serious discussions here that we were having during the budget process. And then, and building upon that. So, whether it's working with individuals who are representatives of the tenants' unions or who work with various tenant groups, I think the July decision makes sense. Because by then, hopefully, our assistance program will have kicked in. And we'll have some idea as to what the needs are in the city. From my conversations with folks in property ownership, anecdotally, of course, this is not authoritative. I know staff also did some research. The percentages of non-payment at this point are roughly between 20% to 25% of tenants, excluding those individuals who may be somehow taking advantage of it. You know, we hear the rumors of some individuals receiving money from various assistance programs and not using that to pay their rent or not paying any portion of their rent when they can pay some of it. Excluding that, we should get, hopefully, some idea as to how many people apply to our programs. Hopefully, we have those strict guidelines in place to find out what their needs are. And then, based on that, we can decide how we move forward at the end of July. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council.
Thank you. Councilmember Devine.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I think that we all have to remember that, right now, we're in a very fluid situation. As far as this COVID goes, we don't know where we're going to be next week or the end of the month. And so, I think it behooves us to take this decision-making and this whole process slowly. The other thing is that, you know, Glendale, this council has been ahead of the county, has been ahead of LA in face coverings. You know, we stood on our own two feet and we said, we want our residents to wear face coverings. And that was before the county. So, as far as going with the county, or going with LA, or waiting for a bill to get through the Senate, that could take 10 years or three years. We don't have that time. So, I, and I also agree with the woman that called and said that we're looking at 300,000 people that could lose their homes, their apartments, their residences because of this virus. I don't think, at this point, that this is the time for us to lift this moratorium on our residential. I think this is a safeguard. So, I'm all in favor of extending the moratorium for our residential residents. I also, I did what I guess Councilmember Najarian did, except I drove through, I didn't go to Beverly Hills. I drove through Glendale, around the Americana, around the Galleria, et cetera. And I did see a lot of shoppers, and they actually had bags. So, they were shopping. And I thought, well, okay, things are opening up, and people are active and spending their money. And the commercial is maybe getting back on their feet again. So, I am in favor of letting the moratorium on commercial evictions expire. And let them begin that process of repaying. You know, it's, you know, I always say it's all about being fair to everyone. But you know what? In this case, there is no being fair. We all have to pay a price. We all have to do a little bit of suffering in order to make it through this. And, you know, the council is, we're trying our best to provide subsidies for the small businesses, for renters, for, you know, we're donating, we're funding millions of dollars into our residents, our constituents. And we, I think we're doing probably the best job we can right now. And so, that would be my recommendation to let the moratorium on commercial evictions expire and extend the moratorium on residential evictions.
Thank you.
Oh, you wanted to, I have a question for.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Councilmember Brotman.
Just from a legal perspective, as you mentioned, if we were to let our orders expire, our moratorium expire, then I understand that there could be some legal issues.
Because of the county, you mean?
Yeah, yeah. On the other side, I think you said also that if we were to not extend, that potentially some tenants could make a case that, you know, we should be subject to what the county did. So, is it true that we would be, I guess, from a legal point of view, we would be avoiding the maximum amount of potential liability if we were to just align to the county? Is that, would that be kind of, from your perspective, the best position?
Councilmember Brotman, when you say align, you mean?
Just do what they, just follow in line with what they are doing. So, they've extended.
Extend to July 31st?
Yeah.
That, certainly, I think it's legally, it's going to be more justified to be in line with that. Obviously, if you don't extend at all, then our liability goes to zero. But then, at that point, landlords and tenants will have some disputes as to whether or not the county's orders apply to them.
Oh, I see. So, that would be between landlords and?
That would be my view, yes. Because at that point, it would be a tenant attempting to exercise its rights under the county's orders to say, Glendale no longer has a moratorium, I'm going to, and the county's order says, if Glendale doesn't have an order, I can utilize the county's order. I don't think that's a viable option. But again, it will probably have to be litigated by, at some point.
Okay.
If I can address just that question.
Okay, Mr. Najarian.
So, the problem is what I described. That issue won't come before a judge. So, a landlord can't sue the tenant and have the tenant try the defense, hey, wait a minute, we're under the county July 31st moratorium or eviction moratorium. Because that landlord can't even get a unlawful detainer complaint filed. So, that's what I'm telling you. We're sitting there worrying about, is it going to be here? Is it going to be there? There will not be a case before a judge for months in which a tenant or a landlord can argue which law applies this month. So, unless there's a class action or a declaratory relief or something like that, but that's going to be months anyway. It's going to be briefed, it's going to be, you know. So, that's my point, is that it's unlikely that a tenant or a landlord will be able to argue which law is in effect. Because, again, who's on top? The California Judicial Council says, we're not taking any of these cases, whether you're right or wrong, for 90 days after the governor lifts the state of emergency. So, that's why I'm saying, let's just fold our hands and let the county issue, you know, let's presume that we're working under the county ordinance. So, that's all I'm saying. It's.
I think Councilmember Najarian's point is very well taken. I mean, you're right. You know, ultimately, that is the trump card, right? That, perhaps, bad choice of words. But it is ultimately, you know, what is going to dictate how these are resolved and the delays with getting some resolution to it. But there is one issue here, which is, you know, getting that information to the people that need to understand that information. And I think that, as a city, we also can look at ourselves as having an obligation of presenting some clarity. Because from an attorney's perspective, and in a roomful of attorneys, people may understand that, but your average tenant may not understand that. So, how do we get that information, explain that? And also, you know, we know that we've put a number of measures in place. But there are people that show me letters that they're receiving, you know, happening all over the county, of course. But even from Glendale, people receiving letters of rent hikes, which I refer to staff, of course, to get some clarification and give them the information they need. On top of all that, you know, when the time to pay back the back rent comes about, that is a de facto rent hike, right? So, if we don't do anything to continue the rent increase freezes, at least, you know, can someone conceivably demand the repayment as well as simultaneously hike the rent or raise the rent on a potential, potentially on a tenant? I mean, they could. I would think that most landlords, and I would hope most landlords wouldn't do it, but it could happen. So, what is our obligation to protect that tenant to make sure that they're working to make the landlord whole while not having rent increase? And the exception, for instance, if there is some sort of repairs or some sort of major work that needs to be done. These are the things that I'd like to get a better understanding and see what is our role. If working with the county is going to help us get to a quicker answer, because they've already thought of these things and are figuring them out. Someone mentioned, even they're working on some sort of report of linking rent forgiveness to mortgage forgiveness and how it can be paired. Which, by the way, if there is such a report, once it's out, I would like it to come to this council, or at least come to us in memo format. Then, fine, go with the county. But I understand what you're saying, Councilmember Najarian. It's a very good point. But we do need to get that information clearly to the tenants. And most of the landlords, I think, already know that. So, they can have some peace of mind. Otherwise, they're going to have this constant worry about what's coming around the next corner, along with every other concern that we're worried about during this pandemic.
Thank you. Okay. I guess we are spending too much time on this, and we have others, items that we have to go over. I just want to, I don't want to make long comments. But I wanted to read a letter. I get 1,000 emails a day through my city council, being city council and mayor, two TV stations, and my personal. One of them I just saw today, but it came yesterday. Glendale Association of Realtors, which I'm not a member of. I'm not a Realtor. As you know, I'm a professional engineer. Eviction Moratorium Agenda, Item 8A. 6:30, 20 meeting. The letter says, Dear Mayor, Agentian, and Councilmembers, Agenda Item 8A. The 1,400 members of Glendale Association of Realtors understand that you may wish to extend the eviction moratorium and rent freeze due to expire on June 30. While our city and LA County are slowly coming out of the Corona COVID-19 crisis, we are aware that we are still some way from full recovery. We continue to advocate for a go-slow approach and urge that you extend for only another 30 days at this time, which I wholeheartedly agree. 30 days at this time, which I wholeheartedly agree. It says, thank you for your consideration and your strong leadership during this time. And this is from Mr. Stephen Small, and, who is a realtor, and apparently in charge of the, this 1,400-member committee, or members of Glendale Association of Realtors. So that's why, in the beginning, I said, and here is County of Los Angeles, which says that eviction moratorium and rent freeze will be until July 31st of 2020 on both issues. So that's why I'm offering, let's wait until end of next month, maybe lots of issues will be more clear, to get ourselves in another headache, when, as you have mentioned here, Mr. Najarian and others mentioned here, the California Judicial Council says, I mean, I can't imagine, it says, in effect, until 90 days after the governor declares that the state of emergency is lifted, or until amended or repealed by the judicial council. I, I mean, this is such a confusing situation, and that's what the best thing will be, will be postpone this until, or extend this until July 31st, and then probably we will have a better picture of what we have to do. This is, of course, my suggestion.
If I could make a motion to help us move, move this on, so, I would make, I would like to make a motion that we extend, I think both the commercial and residential at this point, extend them in line with LA County, meaning to July 31st. So that would be A1 and A2. I would, I would move an extension for those two items. I still do want to come back to the rent.
I thought we were, excuse me, but I, I thought we were talking about expiring the commercial eviction.
Well, we've talked, we've talked about both, but.
Now, the offer is on number one and number two.
I think there's consensus around the rent, the residential, so let me move that one. There seems to be more consensus that we extend that one, so I'll move that one initially. So that's A2.
That's extending 8A2 by, till July 31st?
Till July 31st.
Is the second?
Second.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Brotman?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Kusakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Agajonian?
Yes.
Now.
And I'd like to make a motion on item number one, that we expire, or, yeah, expire the order relating to the moratorium on commercial evictions. Let that one expire.
I'm sorry.
If I may, if I, can I just make a point of clarification, slash point of order? If no action is taken on that, it will expire, so a motion to, a motion isn't needed to let it expire, a motion is only needed to let it be extended.
Oh, I see, okay. Oops.
I have mixed feelings, so I really don't know about this one.
So there is nobody in favor of extending 8A1, Moratorium on Commercial Evictions?
I mean, I, I think I'm in the same boat, I have mixed feelings, but ultimately, along, you know, whether it happens now or later, we're going to all have to.
This is to extend until July 31st?
I understand, I understand, but I think that, in order to get some clarity on to what's happening, we, and given that, anything is going to happen, we don't know what's going to happen next, right? We, we just received, noticed that bars are going to close, and other places may close again. Ultimately, I think if we let it expire, we're just going to have to see what happens, and if there is a need for action, I'm sure staff will come back with us if we see that more businesses are closing again, and someone above us has put the halt on, on the economy yet again, then we'll have to take action. But for now, I'm fine with letting it expire, with consternation, I'm dismayed, but I'm fine with letting it expire. I feel the same way.
I'll move 8A3, extending the residential rent freeze to July 31st.
I'll second.
There is a second?
I second.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Brotman?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Kusakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Agajonian?
Yes.
I will move 8A4. I think that's one of the most important parts of this, this should be extended definitely.
I'll second that. Ms. Devine?
Roll call, please.
If I could, if I could, is that extended indefinitely, or to the 31st?
Extend to the 31st.
I would suggest extending it open-ended, and then either the council or the director can.
Did you hear that, Ms. Devine? He was suggesting leaving it open-ended, and then coming back and removing it. I, I will defer to your motion, either way you want.
Let, let's, let's do that for a month, till July 31st as well.
For a month?
We can bring that one back.
Until we cancel the order?
We can bring it back, sure.
She wants to July 31st.
Yeah.
July 31st is.
I don't know, but that was, she, you know.
Okay. Is there a motion that to have it longer?
Well, he made a motion, I don't know if there was a second or not.
I wanted to discuss, if I could just, I wanted to discuss the topic. I mean, I, I'm happy supporting this motion, I'm happy supporting a motion to extend it indefinitely. I actually want to have a little bit of a discussion around this issue, but we can do that after, it's, it's not connected to the vote, I support extending it.
Oh, okay, so we can go ahead and vote on it?
So we can vote, and then I can, or I can, I mean, what I, what I want to talk, I just want to talk about, well, I, I have a couple questions about it first. So our, I know our ordinance right now around face coverings is pretty much in line with LA County, but maybe not word for word, is that, is that right? I mean, the exceptions that we laid out, are those pretty much the same?
I think the exceptions are more in line with the state, but, correct, it's, it's broad, they're all, all three orders are, are very broad in their application.
Uh huh. I know we have these exceptions if you have certain health conditions. How do we handle, so somebody, you know, somebody wants to walk into store, and they say, well, I've got, I've got a health condition, I don't need to wear a mask. Is that up to the store to determine whether they're going to allow that person in, or how, how do we handle that?
Essentially, yes, it's, it's left up to the individual proprietor, because, and I know there's been a lot of media discussion about that in recent days, but that essentially would be very, be too challenging for the city to actually do enforcement, to make sure somebody's got a, a particular disability, and in some cases, it's, it's not appropriate to ask.
You can't ask because of HIPAA or whatever.
Correct.
Okay.
Not HIPAA, but.
The, the other thing is just, you know, this, this issue of compliance, so, you know, I was in, I was in Ralph's two days ago, I saw Councilwoman Devine in there, and, and I, you know, I was walking around, and I saw two employees there sorting the fruits and vegetables, you know, and, with the mask below the nose. And then I, and then I turned around, I saw this other employee with no mask, well, around the chin. And so I went up to the, the manager, and I, and I told the manager, and she was very responsive, and she apologized, she had, I'll get right on it, I'll talk to them. But I, I feel, and I know you all, you all see the same thing, I feel like people still aren't enforcing it, and if they're not even enforcing it with their own employees, they're certainly not enforcing it with customers. And I just, I, I would like us to figure out something that we can do, and I know, you know, I don't want to have our police go out and start being an enforcement, you know, army, I, I, but I, I would like us to think about, you know, is, is there some way we can get, you know, code enforcement volunteers? Somebody mentioned, I don't know who mentioned that, but you mentioned that, code enforcement volunteers, not to go out and, you know, they're not going to give citations, but maybe like hand out masks, like I think, yeah, Councilwoman Devine mentioned that, like hand out masks, and remind people, and make a note that we can log, and if a, if an establishment, you know, and like, we go back, we send somebody back, and if, if they're, if they're not cleaning up their act, we tell them, we're going to shut them down. I mean, we have to start getting a lot more serious, I think, about compliance. So I'd, I'd like us to figure out what we can do there. And then the other piece, and, and city manager beers, I, we discussed it, is, I thought we did a great job with that poop fairy signage that we put all around the city, and I was thinking, maybe we can find something that's a little humorous, and, and get, just get some more visibility out there around masks, because a lot of people are, are ignoring it. So that's all I wanted to say, I'm in favor of extending it, but I think we need to, we need to kind of come up with something.
I just want to ask our city attorney now, can we modify this, saying that the store owner has the right to refuse service to whoever does not wear a mask? The store owner to know, you know, specifically, that he has the power to refuse, to let the person in? Because right now, they don't know, they say, we don't know what we have to do. We ask, why we can't make it more enforceable, saying the store owner has the right to refuse service?
They have the right under California law to enforce that anyway, to enforce this order, or any, any lawful order, such as, you know, no shirt, no shoes, no service, I mean, that's, that's the business owner's right to, to decide, as long as it's not on a lawful basis, who can come in and out of their, their particular store, so, but if you want, the only hesitation I have is I, I would want to write something up, and so I think it's better for us to enforce that on administrative level, to say, to let people know, that we can, we can enforce something and let business owners know that they have the right under this order to, to enforce it in that manner. And when I walk around town and other places, I see that most businesses have that signage clearly up, saying that you have to have a face covering on to enter.
No, but it says you have to have face covering, but it's different that the store manager has the right to go, because they're hesitating, because I met the store owner, because I don't want to get involved with it, I don't know what my rights are, then we'll be hidden, but he, he has something in his hand, that they will print, and they say, okay, we can refuse the service to.
Part of the county guidelines for businesses, in terms of face coverings for individuals who are entering the business, and so very easily, those orders and guidelines can be printed for the managers and the owners of, of the stores. And much of the education that we've done, in terms of flyers that we've handed out to businesses, includes information related to the need to have face coverings on, and I think it's a matter of not wanting to get involved or offend anybody oftentimes, when certain individuals within stores may not want to ask their customers to actually put their masks on, that may be hanging on their ear or around their neck, and feel shy or embarrassed, and don't want to get into any sort of altercation, so they just don't do it, even though the sign may say on the door, no mask, no service. So it's an interesting dynamic.
No, but what's the downside? If the county has it, we say whatever county says, this is, we are following the same thing. What's the downside?
The downside is I haven't written it yet, so I just, that's, that's my, I, there are a couple of options, as, as Ms. Spears mentioned, it's in the county protocols for reopening of businesses, retail stores, restaurants, so those businesses cannot open unless now they have the signage, but they're actually enforcing it. But if we want to have our own order, I would recommend that we either, you give us direction, and, and we can either see whether we can adopt administrative regulation, or adopt a new emergency order to put that into effect. I just don't want to include it here, because I haven't written it, and I want to make sure it's not overbroad or underbroad. That's my only, that's my only concern.
Okay, all right. So we can do it at this moment, basically.
Right.
All right, so we go with, we have the.
We have a motion, I think.
We have a motion, and the second, roll call, please.
Councilmember Brotman?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Kusakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
And Mayor Agajonian?
Yes. What's next, please?
And I'll, I'll move 8A5.
The outdoor dining permits for the alfresco.
Second.
Do I have, okay, we have a second, so roll call, please.
Councilmember Brotman?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Kusakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
And Mayor Agajonian?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. What's next, please?
Next item would be Human Resources regarding memorandum of understanding between the City of Glendale and Glendale City Employees Association, and resolution addressing the terms and conditions of said MOU. 8B1 Resolution approving and adopting the memorandum of understanding between the City of Glendale and the Glendale City Employee Association, commencing July 1st, 2020 through June 30th, 2020.
Mr. Yasmin, Ms. Yasmin Beers.
Mayor Agajonian, members of the city council, we'll go directly to Matt Doyle, Human Resources Director.
Mr. Matt Doyle.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, the item before the resolution adopting a memorandum of the City of Glendale, current MOU, which has a term.
Microphone, microphone.
Is your microphone on?
I will project louder. The, this item is a resolution adopting a one-year memorandum of understanding between the City of Glendale and the Glendale City Employees Association, commencing July 1st, 2020 through June 30th, 2020.
Mr. Yasmin, Ms. Yasmin Beers.
Mayor Agajonian, members of the city council, we'll go directly to Matt Doyle, Human Resources Director.
Mr. Matt Doyle.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, the item before the resolution adopting a memorandum of the City of Glendale, current MOU, which has a term.
Microphone, microphone.
Is your microphone on?
I will project louder. The, this item is a resolution adopting a one-year memorandum of understanding between the City of Glendale and the Glendale City Employees Association. Current MOU, which has a term of three years, expires today, June 30th, 2020. The GCA group represents just under 700 rank-and-file non-management general employees throughout nearly every city department, including all the civilian staff within police and fire departments, as well as librarians, entry and mid-level engineers, computer technicians. This group represents just under 700 rank-and-file non-management general employees throughout the organization, pretty much every city department, including all the civilian staff within the police and fire department, as well as librarians, entry and mid-level engineers, computer technicians, field workers, integrated waste clerical employees, and administrative physicians. As with the recent negotiations with the GMA bargaining unit, our plans for a traditional meet-and-confer process were quickly upended due to the COVID-19 pandemic. We had an initial negotiation session, several follow-up meetings between the heads of each negotiation team. Ultimately, similar to the GMA, the parties were able to come to terms on a bare-bones MOU agreement, with seasonal salary adjustments, or any broad-based enhancements in wages or benefits, in exchange for no concessions at this time. The GCA's leadership understands the budgetary challenges facing the city, and thus wants to be part of the solution by foregoing any wage enhancements, as they have done so many times in the recent past, as the reported case. As was the case with the GMA MOU a few weeks ago, even though the desire, desire of this group is a no cola slash no concession MOU, this group will experience a reduction in take-home pay as a result of the increase in medical insurance costs, of which employees pay one-half of the increase of the medical insurance payments each, each year. Also, as was the case with, with the recent GCA MO, GMA MOU, the proposed MOU for the GCA includes additional holiday hours to enable employees to take time off, participate in various cultural events that are significant to the Glendale community. What this consists of is nine additional voting holiday hours, which is the, which is the equivalent of a one workday. These would include commemorations for the Armenian genocide, Chavez's birthday, Juneteenth, or any other specific events or remembrances that are meaningful to our employees. With that, I will say that staff does support the extension or rollover of this existing MOU for one year, and we recommend city council adoption. GCA membership completed its ratification vote on this proposal. its ratification vote on this proposal just last week, and it passed with an 88% approval of the membership. That, this item again, is for city council's consideration. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to try and answer them.
I just, yes, I have a question. Not question, I just want you to explain. So this will be memorandum memorandum of understanding, and for one year, the salaries will stay basically the same.
Mr. Mayor.
Except who, there are a group of employees, which is still 226 of them from GCA, that their salaries will go or become, I mean, they get more salaries or hires the rate. All right?
Mr. Mayor, that is not correct. I believe what you're referring to is the step advancement process that's in place.
Step advancement. Okay, what is that?
That is a part of all of the all of the MOUs. And it's part of all of our MOUs with the various bargaining units, which provides for salary step adjustment within a range. When those employees are hired, they are promised that they will be within a particular range. They generally start out at the lower end of that range. As they are evaluated for their job performance on an annual basis, they will advance within that range. That would occur whether you adopt this MOU or not. That is part of, again, all of the MOUs with the various groups. And it's a promise made to employees when they're hired in this organization.
And there are 226 employees there.
Out of 226 out of approximately 700 bargaining.
Okay. I just want to make clear that, okay. Is there any question from city council members?
I would like to make some comments, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, please, Mr. Kusakian.
Well, first of all, I think that, you know, compared to another similar item that was before us, this one doesn't increase anyone's salaries. In fact, our employees would be technically making less because they would be sharing more of the cost of insurance or other expenses. But one thing I wanted to point out, which is why I will vote for this, but one of the things I want to point out that was somewhat glossed over amidst all of the technical jargon of an employee MOU is this fact that we have added this additional floating holiday for our employees. And I think it's an important thing to note and single out for residents to realize some of the steps that the city is taking in order to be understanding of the diversity, inclusivity in our community for some years now. I know Glendale Community College is closed on April 24th. Glendale Unified School District is closed on April 24th for commemoration of the Armenian genocide, and I think rightfully so. But in the city, you know, we still have to operate, and the business of the city still goes on, even though we have a large number of individuals who are of Armenian descent and/or who have children who may not be of Armenian descent, but when the schools in Glendale close on April 24th because of lack of childcare and other concerns, may have to take that day off. So I think for that reason, it is important to include this additional floating holiday, which is basically a day off that they can pick and choose to take at their time. However, you know, I think that it's commendable that we created this floating holiday, which can be used by anyone of any, you know, creed, religion, ethnicity, to celebrate or mark a day off, be that Juneteenth, be that a particular Filipino or Korean holiday, whatever the case may be. So thank you for including that, and I hope the employees will take advantage of it. And with that, I'd like to move the motion.
I'd like to make a, I'm sorry. A brief comment, yeah.
And make the move with the resolution.
Yeah, I would just like to, first of all, thank the GCA for understanding the situation that we're in and being willing to just, you know, move forward with the existing terms other than the floating holiday. So appreciate that. I guess I just, you know, want to emphasize that although we are signing another one-year agreement, and we hope that we don't have to go back to the negotiating table this year, it is still possible. And I'm hoping that the GCA, and I expect the GCA would understand if we face very dire economic, a very dire economic situation because of COVID, that they will come back to the table and negotiate with us over concessions. So just kind of want to put that out there. But, you know, thank them and thank them in the future for flexibility to the extent it's needed, and I hope it's not.
Thank you.
So I will second, I think there was a motion, I will second it.
Is there anything, council members, you want to say anything? Ms. Okay, no, I guess I hear none. May I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Brotman?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Kusakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Agajanian?
Yes, next item, please.
Next item would be eight D, Public Works Regarding Operation Maintenance and Expansion of the City Andover Building Management System. Eighty-one, resolution dispensing with competitive bidding and authorizing the city manager to execute a contract with Schneider Electric Buildings Americas Incorporated for the five years and $895,000 total.
Ms. Yasmin Beers.
Yes, Mayor Agajanian, members of the council, will go directly to Mr. Emrani, Public Works Director.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Mayor Agajanian and members of city council. This report is related to the Andover Building Management Systems, which is, controls the heating, ventilation, and air conditioning system for throughout the facilities we have here at the city. And we've had the system for almost 20 years, and we've heavily invested in it. It's a very good system, very reliable system. And so we are respectfully requesting a five-year contract with Schneider Electric to basically continue maintenance of the system for the next five years. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Is there any question from Yasna Emrani?
I have a question.
Roll, yes, you want to move the item?
No, I want to ask Mr. Emrani if this is the air conditioning that we have in that, in the council chambers.
Absolutely, yes.
They're always, they're always freezing. Have they fixed that?
Yeah, we're, we'll work on that.
Okay, good. I'll move the item.
Is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
Second, roll call, please.
Councilmember Brotman?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Kusakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Agajanian?
Yes.
Next item.
Next item would be eight E, Glendale Water and Power, Regarding Glendale Water and Power Trading Authority Policy and Annual Authority for the Purchase or Sale of the Energy Commodities and Services. One, motion approving amendments to the GWP Trading Authority Policy. Two, resolution approving the renewal of annual authorization for the city's manager to enter into contracts for the purchase or sale of energy commodities and service not to exceed five years in duration and dispensing with competitive bidding.
Ms. Yasmin Beers.
Mayor Agajanian, members of the city council, Mr. Mark Young, Deputy General Manager for Power Management for GWP, will provide you with a PowerPoint presentation.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, thank you. Years ago, our trading authority policy was very broad.
Microphone.
And would only come to council when there was actual changes to council. And when Mr. Zern became the General Manager of GWP, he provided direction to drastically change that concept. He brought, brought the scope down of the energy trading policy very narrow, and we indicated that we were going to come to council for review on a yearly basis. The changes to the, changes to these policies are based on various market changes as a result of the amendment of this policy. One of the notable, notable amendments to the trading authority policy was the inclusion of the low carbon fuel standard that you approved in the consent items earlier.
Excuse me, Mr. Young.
Sir.
Do we have this item?
The handout.
Provided us beside being.
He wants the handout.
Do you have it?
The presentation?
I guess I don't have it. I'm sorry. That's okay. I will look at the computer. There's a problem.
Sorry. And another notable, another notable amendment is that we had put pricing restrictions on the purchasing and selling of energy, and we realized last year, between last year and this year, that we sold energy over the limit. And we got, kind of got in trouble from the energy risk manager for selling energy too expensive in the market with, when the market was such that we were being able to sell. So now we're going to change the authority to only purchase. Any sales are going to be market-driven. I think that's a very important concept because our trader definitely got in trouble for selling it $10 more expensive than the limit. So I think we actually went through these already, where they're going to increase the authority limits on, on the renewables and the low-carbon fuel. And we're going to memorialize the emissions auction governing for where we're going to put the money as in separate accounts based on state mandates that these monies be allocated strictly for intended purposes with the low-carbon fuel standard and the, our carbon transactions. The dispensing with competitive bidding is something that we ask you every year. It's not possible for us to actually perform trading and actually purchase energy, whether it be natural gas or energy, without this authorization, since we do this on an hourly basis. And energy prices change during the day, it can change by the minute. So I'm here to answer any of your questions.
I just have questions. Page three. If you, please look at page three, bilateral electric power and transmission transaction limits. Why you want to, you already have an authority to work on these matters for three years. Why we want to extend now from three years to five years? And then from 70 mega, what's this, and dollars per megawatt per transaction, from 50 megawatt to 100 megawatt, and dollars per megawatt from $55 to 100. These revisions better align GWP with current market condition. But you already have this ability. Last year, you got the, for three years, am I right?
The three years increase to five years is the lead time, not the transaction, not the transaction time. We already have the ability to transact for five years, but if we wanted to set up energy purchases for, say, the repower or the demolition of Grayson facility, we might need to do it in three years, and we might need to have it lined up for now for three years or five years down the line.
But if it comes to the point that you want to, you need more time, these council members, you'll come back to council members, says, okay, three years is not good. From three years, you want to change it to five years now, but we will be here for next three years. We are not going anywhere. So we'll come back and says, okay, the time elapsed, and I want to extend this time period.
Well, that's what we're doing. We're, we're asking for the extension right now. And the concept of this is to come back to you and address these, these changes in the market conditions on a yearly basis and ask you for the ability to do that.
I think, Mr. Mayor, if I could, if I could make a comment.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Because I, I've not been in the same business as them, trading commodities, but I have been in the currency trading world. And so I think, you're not saying you want the authorization for five years. You're saying you want to be able to trade a product for delivery beyond three years, right? Out to five years.
Correct. It's the lead time.
So they want to be able to do a trade today to receive power out, let's say, four years from now, which is a four contract, right?
Correct.
And so they're asking for the authority to do that. I just want to clarify, that's my understanding of this.
Thank you, yes.
Last year, when you came to get the authorization, what was it saying in there? For three years?
It was for three years.
Okay. And last year, you did not have that worries. Last year, you came, that's what I'm saying. Last year, same time last year, you came for authorization for three years. Now you're coming for, basically for five years. Why last year, there was no worries, and now all of a sudden, we are worried that from now, we have to have not three years, but to, from three years, move it to five years?
Well, the repower, the repower, the power plant does definitely adjust the idea of being able to have energy or procure energy prior to the demolition and construction of any facility down at Grayson.
Grayson, Grayson, you're going to work on it, and we are here. I still don't understand this. And it says same thing for natural gas, it says it for renewable energy, credit transaction, right? And carbon allowance, and that one, I guess we are getting credit. I don't, I don't understand this. All of a sudden, this year is different than last year.
Every year is different, sir. Every year is different. Back in 2000, when I was trading, the energy prices were $15,000 a megawatt.
So what has to do with, do you're getting, you're asking authorization, transaction lead time from three years to five years? Everything changes, I understand. And dollar per megawatt from 75 to 100, and same with the natural gas. I know, but we are here. I, no, it's.
So, Mr. Young, if I, if I may, is one of the very reasons, as Mr. Young indicated, that we come back to every year. Market conditions can change drastically from one year to another, or our situation in Glendale can change from one year to another. As we get closer to determining what's going to happen at Grayson, and something's going to happen, we just don't have a final determination on that. Is it going to be all battery? Is it going to be some battery and some thermal? Is it going to be some other amount of energy production? So what the lead time does is allow us to secure enough power to get us through that transitional period. Chances are, the five-year will be, we will exercise that very rarely, but it gives us the option to do that. And that's why we come every year to you, because these things change. The regulatory world changes. And previously, the parameters, as Mr. Young indicated, were so wide, and we had so much authority within GWP, that it made me uncomfortable, quite frankly. And that's why I narrowed it tremendously and said, we'll go back every single year and explain to council what changes are occurring and what we anticipate. Now, we may come back next year and go, well, we think going back to three years is beneficial at this time. Price changes are a lot of times market-driven. So.
I understand. That's why it bothers me, that you are not getting the authorization, and you're going to go and you don't see us for next two, three, three to five years.
No, no, no.
No, you'll see us next year.
Every year.
Plus, every major.
I understand it's every year. That's why I'm saying, why you wouldn't come when you need it. If there is something, a year or two, something happens, you want to extend it, you come to us and get the authorization.
Because we could lose the window of opportunity in which to take advantage of the trade and the, and the activity. Coming back, that's the. Coming back, that's the reason we do it this way. It's a little out of the norm for how we do our general business. But because, as Mark said, we may be trading on a minute-by-minute increment, the burden of having to come back each time or even on a handful of transactions could hurt us tremendously. That's why we set a very narrow, very narrow set of parameters that the council approves. We also have a number of checks and balances in place, from traders to supervision of the traders to a risk manager who doesn't work for the trading operation, works directly for me, to me, and to my boss. And so that checks and balances keeps us, keeps us whole. And each of these trades is recorded. We even have an outside firm that actually monitors our trading as well. So we have a lot of checks and balances in there. Believe me, this is, this is a rather, we've kept it to a rather minimal number of changes that we make to the, to the policy each year. But as we see things change, trends change, markets change, regulatory requirements change, we try to keep pace with those to make sure that we don't get hamstrung. As Mark said, we had a cap, we had something in there that put handcuffs on a trader, selling. And he actually exceeded what the policy said immediately. We want you to sell, we want our traders to sell for the highest possible price they can get. We want to buy for the absolute lowest price. But we want to sell for the highest. So there's an anomaly we found and we were asking that that be traded or that be revised as well. And next year, we may be back with changes, we may not. But each year, we come back. And the entire policy is up for your, for your review and questions each and every year. We highlight the changes, but certainly any other thing in the policy that you'd like us to discuss, we're more than happy to do that. Again, which is why we bring it back each year. It's not something that we want to approve once, go away for 10 years and come back. And usually, in periods like that, you're trying to fix problems that happen. So we want to avoid that.
Okay, is there any question for?
No, I would, I would just say, you know, I went through this with them and I think, I think it's very technical business that they're in. And I think one of the things, just to be, just to be clear, is, what they're saying is, they may need to go out, let's say, next week. And they may find there's an opportunity in the market to buy energy that's going to be delivered to us in four years. And they want to be able to take advantage of that now. That's why, is that right? That's why they want the authority to be able to take advantage of those opportunities if they arise. It's not, they're not saying they're not going to come back to us for five years on this issue. What they're saying is, they want, they want to be able to trade, take an opportunity for power that's available in five years.
And of course, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, when we make large commitments, as you know, we always come back to council for approval of those. The most recent, as you know, Eland and Open Mountain. So those contractual obligations, which aren't something that occurs on a daily trading basis, those always come back to council for full vetting.
I understand. But what you are buying now, four years down the road, I don't think that will be beneficial for the city. Because things change as rapidly, as you know. I mean, solar energy, at one time, the price was so high. And now it became like, so low prices now. I mean, four years later, you're trading now for, for four years later? And you are sure that's a better price? That, I mean.
And quite frankly, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I think maybe we're, we've got a little apples to oranges there. When we're talking about contracts for Lex Solar, that's outside of the day-to-day trading and those are, those are securing energy for long periods of time. The longer periods make the energy more, more cost-effective, number one. Number two, we're required by the state to enter into long-term agreements.
I understand, but you were not concerned last year to extend it to five years. You kept it in three years. And this year, all of a sudden, it became an issue that we have to extend it to five years.
Mr. Mayor, it's simply one of the things that we, we, as we go through the review process in preparation of coming to you with any potential changes, it's one of the things that arose in the discussions of the Energy Risk Management Committee and through our risk manager. And we brought it, brought it up and thought this would be something that would give us a little more flexibility to, we believe, not commit the city to a negative purchase overturn, but to take advantage of the market and in fact, secure a very good deal. Because that's, that's the business we're in. We're not in it to secure four deals.
All right, thank you, anyway, thank you. Okay, is there any other questions?
I'll move the item.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Now you second it, okay, roll call, please.
Councilmember Brotman?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Kassakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Agajanian?
Yes. What's next?
Next is oral communication. The discussion is limited to items not a part of this agenda. Council may question or respond to the speaker, but there will be no debate or decision. The city manager may refer the matter to the appropriate department for investigation and report. Mayor, we do not have any calls.
Thank you. Would you like to wait just a few, a minute or so?
Yes, we have to wait for a few minutes because it takes time until.
Can we do new business while we're waiting?
Sure.
Any new business?
I have new business, Mr. Mayor. I move that the city attorney be and hereby is authorized to amend the retainer agreement with the law firm of Myers, Nave, Reback, Silver, and Wilson, Greg Newmark, to provide legal services in connection with a matter. The amendment shall contain a fee cap for providing the legal services.
Okay.
Is there a second?
Yeah, I, is there a second?
Second.
Do we need a roll call?
Councilmember Brotman?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Kassakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Agajanian?
Yes. I guess I have two other motions.
No, those, those are just substitute motions on the consent items. That's the only item.
These are dead.
There are only one new business, yes.
Okay, do we have? Okay, we are waiting for calls from the public. If you want to comment on any item, whether it's related to today's or any other issues, you may call at this time. And our phone number is 818-937, 8100, I guess, right? 937-8100. I was going to say 818-548-4844 to call.
My understanding is still, there are no calls.
There are no calls, so.
Adjourn?
Do we adjourn, okay?
I'd like to adjourn in the memory of Mary Margaret Smith.
Oh, yes, and the, yes, Ms. Devine?
Yes, please, let's adjourn in memory of Mary Margaret Smith.
Second.
So we adjourn in the memory of.
Mary Margaret Smith.
Thank you.